Okay. Yes. Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Emmitsburg's Town Meeting for the night of Monday, June 2nd, 2025. At this time, I ask you to please silence your cell phones of any rings, notification, beeps, gaming, whatever else might disrupt the meeting. And we will do the same. And with that, I invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the repeat justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Future meetings include. We have a sustainability work group meeting on June 14th at 7:00 PM in the town office. We have our next Planning Commission meeting on June 30th at 7:00 PM here in the town office and on Zoom. Board of Commissioners meeting is July 14th, 7:00 PM here in the town office and on Zoom. And we have Citizens Advisory Committee meeting coming up on July 15th at 7:00 PM here in the town office. And before we move on, I just wanted to take the time to recognize we have Mason Carter from County Council here with us tonight. So, Mr. Carter, we welcome you. Did you want to say a few words? We can, not to put you on the spot, but to put you on the spot.
Sure, interesting. No, I don't have any words. But, you know, I'm just happy to be up in Emmitsburg today, here to listen, not to speak. But I heard you guys are doing some great work, so I want to come and see for myself. Yes.
Thank you so much. Okay. With that, we are going to be turning to approving the minutes for April 7th. I trust that you've had a chance to look at the corrections that were sent. Is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes for April 7th, 2025? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion except the.
Oh, did you have a question? Yeah, but I can ask after. Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Yes, I'll ask staff. I had sent in some updates for the minutes. Were those minutes, I mean, were those updates acceptable? For the May 5th and May 12th? Well, May, April 7th, I had a question about those minutes and then the other two minutes from, yeah, May 5th and May 12th, there were a few additions.
Uh, no. Ms. King was off today. And so by the time we got, by the time she came in this evening, they were not fixed. I did send them to Commissioner Bowman-Polat for her review as well. So you'll just have to bring them up at tonight's meeting.
Okay, okay, we can do that. Did you have the question regarding the April 7th that you wanted to bring up? Um, page nine of 81. I think it's nine bullets up from the bottom. It says, "We will have 1.1 million in revenue for FY '26," which also takes into account half the year with FEMA gone. But I thought we had determined that that 1.1 million was with FEMA included.
Not at the April 7th meeting. At the April 7th meeting, we had still left in the half the year of FEMA being gone because we didn't know. I don't think mayor got word on FEMA till the May meetings. So that's, that is correct.
Okay. So we can approve April 7th. Okay. So, um, any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any abstain? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to approving meeting minutes for April 5th, 2025. Oh, jeezaloo. May, it's gonna be a long night. Please help me out. Uh, May 5th, 2025. Before I bring it to a vote, questions, comments? Commissioner Turnquist, yeah, on page 11 of 81. Approval of minutes. Commissioner Hagan motion to table until June 2nd. We could change that to June 2nd. Just tonight. Um, page 13 of 81. The bullets at the bottom where it says Mayor Davis highlighted, the second bullet. State Highway Fund has been raised by $27,700. A few lines down, the general fund budget is estimated to increase by $157,000. And then I had a question on page 14 of 81. Like three paragraphs up from the bottom, uh, where it says mitigation fee is looking to the future. Towards the end of that, it says the town would have to pay the elementary school fee, which is $10,400 per dwelling.
That should be scratched. Okay, yes, that is correct.
I had scratched it out of mine. Okay. Um. And then that's it for June 2nd. You mean, I'm sorry, May 5th. May 5th. We will get these, we will get these dates. I'm looking at the date on the top of the agenda, says June 2nd. I know. There's so much to look at. Um, is there a motion to accept the meeting? With Commissioner Turnquist's changes?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? A motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And finally, moving on to meeting minutes from May 12th. Commissioner Turnquist? I'm good. You're good on that one? Okay. Um, is there a motion to accept May 12th's meeting minutes as presented?
Same move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Um, and with that, we're going to move on to the police report.
Good evening. I'm Deputy Bartholomew. It was a rainy, but pretty busy month. I also have the more detailed stat sheet back finally. So, uh, for May of 2025, two offices in town, uh, four holiday annual, one sick and, uh, two other, um, which was, um, some leave for Deputy Honaker as he had a family member pass away. Um, training and special assignments. Deputy Honaker had his CEDIS recertification. I helped out with the Mother's Seaton Walkathon. Deputy Honaker helped out with the Mother's Seaton Field Day, and we were both, um, there all week for the carnival, which turned out great, by the way, despite the rain. Flea issues, um. 124 calls for service to arrest. Everything else, I'll kind of go over in the, uh, second part. Um, calls worth highlighting, uh, they kind of both have to do with the LPR systems, which were a lot of help this, um, month. We had a theft at the, um, community park that the LPR license plate reader, uh, helped with. Unfortunately, we weren't able to catch a suspect because the tag was stolen. Um, but we were able to identify the, um, tag, which was very helpful in the investigation. Also, the, um, license plate reader helped with, um, assist in finding a missing person, um, that was suffering a mental health, uh, or non-mental health, a health emergency. Um. The county in whole has had a big rise in fraud calls where, um, people were calling in, um, saying they're uh, sheriff's office personnel. Um, so just wanted to bring awareness to that. If you're in doubt, hang up and call, uh, our number. Like I said, Mother's Seaton Carnival turned out great. All right, for the, um, more detailed thing, do you guys want me to read this every month? Or is that something you guys just want to have on file going forward?
I'm okay with just if we have questions to.
Yeah, as long as you give it to us, you don't have to read it.
Perfect. Okay.
Yeah.
That being said, does anyone have any questions?
Well, you had, just to make sure, because I was hearing from, not from here, but from other departments, they were having access and timely access in the LPR information since I see you using it. Were you able to get it in timely or whether?
Yeah, so it's a pro, it is, it's a, I have to send a request in through Maryland State Police, um, and then I have to wait for them to email me back. Um, they have a urgent one and then they have a routine one. Um, both, one I put in as urgent, one I put in as routine this month, and I got them both back probably within, you know, 20 to 30 minutes. But, uh, it could be more, it can be less sometimes.
Yeah, I was hearing, I was taking some people, it's a lot, over a day, that's why I was.
Yeah, we can use them. It's, it's just, it just takes a little bit of time to get the information back sometimes. That's all.
Yeah, and I will be writing a letter to the sheriff to ask him to reconsider having that up and running all the time because where it doesn't help us if we would have a, uh, a wanted person come through town or, uh, yeah, a silver alert or something like that. They have no idea because they, it's not going into their computers. Right. I'm gonna ask the sheriff to reconsider that.
But they, they do work great. The town cameras have worked great, and it's helped us a lot with, uh, different things throughout a few months.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, from there, we're moving on to the Town Manager's Report. Ms. Willetts?
Good evening. Uh, this is the Town Manager's Report from April. I'll just highlight just a few things, uh, related to trash. Trash pickup will remain Mondays on, uh, during the month of June. Um, some noteworthy items, MDE was on site to conduct their inspection at the water plant. We received our inspection report with, for once, no corrective actions needed. They will be back to conduct an onsite inspection at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, we flushed hydrants during the week of April 21st without any incidents. And MDE approved the town's PFAS monitoring plan. Those are just the highlights. If there's any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Willetts? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Willetts. Uh, moving on to Grand Administrator Report.
I have Ms. Shaw's, uh, report here if there's any questions.
Any questions? I just have one. Um, is the new bathroom complete yet?
We're waiting on final inspection from the county. We've had a few difficulties with the county related to the inspection and different inspectors. So, um, the mayor and I have reached out for some additional assistance. So hopefully, we can get through that hurdle and get it, get our final approval.
Okay, I know there's always a lot of activity there with soccer, so I always ask, we have been, we'll say, where's the bathroom?
Hopefully, they don't find something new that they didn't report last time they were out.
Yes. Okay, that's all I have. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, we're moving on to Town Operations Specialist Report. This is Ms. Malocas. Are there any questions on her report? Um, no, other than maybe we should announce the commemorative brick sales are underway. Okay, if anybody's interested in purchasing a commemoration brick that's gonna go out by the new concession stand and bathroom, correct, leading up to there? Yes. Those would need to be purchased by July 1st. And, um, just thank you for everybody who came out too for the, the new farmer's market season kickoff. Um, and please extend my, my thanks to her and all staff who are involved in making that happen. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we're moving on to the Town Planner Report.
Good evening. This is the Town Planner's Report. I'll just highlight a few things. Emmett Ridge, uh, that we've received and updated a preliminary subdivision plan and forest conservation plans, which are currently under review. Brookfield Phase 5, their subdivision plan was approved by the county. They just have to address some comments on the forest conservation plan before the town can sign off on the plans. I'll highlight that we've been working with Arrow to meet MS4 requirements. And, um, regarding Main Street, there, the thing to highlight is that there are three tiers of Main Street. So DHCD is, um, introducing a new structure to support and guide communities in their revitalization efforts. And, um, their recommendation is that the town go with the connected tier. And we just have to give them a final decision by June 20th. And, um, the comprehensive plan, oh, we, we received comments from the state on Friday. And we received comments from the county as well. And, uh, a meeting was arranged by one of those, um, citizen volunteers for the comprehensive plan, this Darren Wallbacher with the Mount St. Mary's University. And we met with the president and the CFO, and, um, we talked about some of the shared goals. And, um, just some, we'll be applying for, uh, the menu legacy grant again this year. And I've listed the meetings that I attended during the month of May.
Thank you. I, you mentioned the different tiers for Main Street and connected was the recommendation. Is that like tier one? Like the lowest tier? And does that, um, I know originally we were concerned about relying on, um, businesses or so to contribute money. Does that?
We don't have that requirement if you're a connected community. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, wait, I do have one more question. Um, for for Emmett Ridge coordinated with FCPS to conduct, conduct the school adequacy test. So I would assume that's where they're projecting how many students would be coming in? And do we know how many years that test was done for?
Three.
Three. And, okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Yes. Um, for the connected and aspiring status, will that be determined based on the survey that was sent out to businesses? Who's, who's gonna determine which level we're gonna apply for?
Um, so the recommendation came from Main Street. The organizers that we are probably where we need to be with committed. The surveys were something we would, had wanted to send out to gauge, uh, business involvement. It will depend on what their, um, surveys come back with. But the, the second level, the aspiring, you can only be in aspiring for two years. And if you don't make it to full-blown Main Street in those two years, you have to go back to connected and basically not start all over again, but you're back at that level for two years. And in talking with them and talking with staff and the, the business conversations we've had already, we're not gonna make it to full-blown in two years. So the recommendation came from them. Obviously, it's, it's left up to the town, but right now, connect is where we need to be.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Oh, okay. From there, we're moving on to Commissioner comments. Make sure I didn't miss anything. Okay, Commissioner Hagan.
So say, been a busy since the last month. Wanted to congratulate staff and pulling off for the first farmer's market and a lot of young families coming out. So it was good to see everybody out there. And the field wasn't flooded, which was a happy thing to sit there. Um, we did the ribbon cutting for our community garden, and despite the rain, we still had a good number of people show up. And the state's using us as going around as a model, suggesting to other communities on how to do it. So looking for that. And thanks to staff at the ground and all the work that Jack's been doing over there. And, you know, Brian keeps breaking plows, but at least the corn's now planted. And then, um, I had the, the honor of being an invited guest to Catoctin High School's graduation last week. And I just wanted to, you know, congratulate all of our graduates out there and wishing the best of luck moving forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Turnquist? I don't have anything. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Sweeney?
Uh, we do have a, another veterans tournament scheduled for this weekend. There will be a couple hundred children playing baseball in, in both parks. So be careful when you come through town. Don't go too fast. Keep your eyes open. They'll be crossing the roads and stuff, going back and forth. And, and, and thanks to the staff, we had some problems with the tournament. We had this past weekend. And the staff come out and then fixed it right away. So we was able to get it, you know, keep the ballgames going despite the rain. And we had a nice veterans ceremony. The mayor came out. And the VFW had a whole bunch of veterans line up along the, the first baseline. We had flag raising. It was really nice. And even though we had rain. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Hoover?
I don't know.
Okay. The only things I have were already said previously. The only thing I can add to that is don't forget, we have Heritage Day coming up. And don't forget to come out and enjoy all the festivities that the, the town and the Lions Club and whoever else participates to make that happen. Please come out and enjoy the festivities. And with that, I turn to Mayor's comments.
Okay, good evening. I'll try to keep this quick. Uh, last Tuesday, uh, Congresswoman April Delaney played, has paid us a visit. She was here for about an hour and a half, and we had a very nice discussion. And, uh, of course, I, I stressed to her that we need help with our infrastructure upgrades. And, uh, she's planning on coming back for lunch and, and a tour of the town. Believe it or not, it was raining the day she was here. Uh, so we couldn't get to, get the tour in, but, um, hopefully, we'll see her back here. Tomorrow, Ms. Shaw and I will be, uh, attending the, uh, POS, uh, grant. Poker game, as, as Mayor Briggs used to call it. You would go and play poker and try to see how much you can come away with. I, I feel really, really good that, uh, we are, uh, going to get the $200,000 that we asked for, for the purchase of property. Middletown and, and us were the only two that put in for land acquisition. And, uh, the mayor and I, we, uh, we bargained on Friday while we were taking a tour of the county landfill with the county executive. That's what mayors do on Friday afternoons, we ride through the landfill. And, um, we, we came to a bargaining point that we should get our $200,000 for that. So that's, that's a good thing. And, uh, the last thing, uh, we, we, we lost a, a great citizen here over the last, uh, two weeks. Ms. Hilda Hemingway, who, uh, lived the, ever since I can remember, lived on the, uh, the square above the print shop. And Ms. Hemingway was the secretary of Emmitsburg School, uh, back when I went there. And, um, she was there probably for 35, 40 years. And I can tell you from experience, when you got sent to the principal's office, she had that calming effect. And she would warn you whether the principal was in a good mood or not. So, uh, that's what my friends told me. It wasn't me. But, uh, but Ms. Ms. Hemingway was just a great, great lady, and, uh, she's, she's gonna be missed. And, uh, so just, uh, offer prayers to her family. That's it.
Thank you. Um, with that, we turn to public comments. Now, just to explain, since we have two public hearings tonight. If you signed up to speak regarding, um, the Student Housing Public Workshop, you'll be called when that, when the public hearing begins or as part of that process. And the same thing, if you signed up to speak with the Water Rates Public Hearing, we will have you come up as part of that hearing. Then we have the General Public Comments, which can address anything. Um, and we just have one. Uh, Diane Walbrecker? Nothing? Ah, all right, I had a whole page dedicated with your name on it. All right, thank you. So from public comments, we are moving on to administrative business, and we just have one, which is approval of free pool day on Community Heritage Day for consideration. And can we, can we make that worded so that it's permanent? So we don't have to vote on it every year? Like? Yep, just write, do it in your motion. Okay. Is there a motion to make a free, to allow a free pool day permanently on Community Heritage Day?
Same move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Um, with that, we move on to our consent agenda, which we have none. And then the Treasurer's Report, Commissioner Turnquist. So this is the cash activity as of May 28th, 2025. Cash balance on May 1st, $8,172,900. Deposits totaling $448,041. Withdrawals, $840,952, with an operating balance forward of $7,779,989. The top 10 checks are there in the middle of the page. Our fund breakdown as of 5/28, in the general fund, we have 1.4 million. Capital Projects Fund, $787,000. Stormwater Management, $15,000. Our water fund is in the red, $318,000. ARPA, 1.9 million. Sewer, 3.7 million, or a total of $7.6 million. And I believe we, did we receive the reimbursement for the water clarifier?
We have one outstanding reimbursement for the, in $200,000. That's the only thing outstanding right now.
That will go to the water fund?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. Moving on to, um, Commissioner Hoover, did you have anything to add for the Planning Commission?
If there was no meeting to make, so to be one in June.
That makes it easy. Thank you. So we have quite a lengthy list of agenda items, um, which we're going to try to power through. At the request of the town and the attorney, we're moving the Student Housing Public Hearing up first, because I, I understand we have some special guests. So with that, let me get my appropriate, uh, paper. Our next agenda item will be to hold a public hearing on the Proposed Ordinance 25-02 Amendment to Chapter 17. 17.04.02.0, 17.36.02.0, 17.36.04.0, and 17.36.09.0 of the Town Code allowing and to allow and establish for student housing in the village zone. At this time, the public hearing will commence. Um. Who do I need to ask as far as, uh, has the hearing been properly advertised? It says to ask Ms. Willetts, but she disappeared. I lost her.
Yes.
Oh, there you are. And so from here, if anyone intends to speak or provide testimony during the public hearing, what I'm going to have you do, and that's whether you're part of the applicant or signed up to speak at this part of, uh, Student Housing Public Hearing. What I'm gonna have you do is stand, or if you can't stand, at least please raise your hand. And, um, if anyone, okay, let me try this again in English. If anyone intends to provide testimony during public hearing, please raise your right hand and give the following oath. Do you solemnly swear or affirm, under penalties of perjury, that testimony given by you in these proceedings will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? And if so, please state, "I do." It wasn't very loud. Screaming out, people. Okay. I hope you said. All right, so from there, we're gonna turn it over to, um, our attorney? Or?
Okay, so, uh, you've been provided with two versions of the ordinance. The first, um, it has, it permits student housing under Section 17.36.02.0 with parking requirements. And, um, the other version designates student housing as a special exception with conditions related to parking, trash, maximum, maximum occupancy, and the International Building Code. And the definitions for bedrooms, post-secondary school, and student housing have been included in both versions. Staff is suggesting that, uh, that we go with the first version, the non-special exception version, because it streamlines approval process and re, re, sorry, reduces uncertainty for property owners and developers. And, you know, also avoids any need for further delay. And you know, also avoids any need for further delays, stuff like that.
And one other point, Nagila's eagle eye on the special exception version caught. An errant inclusion of student housing under seventeen point thirty six point zero two zero. And that should be stricken because it wouldn't be a permitted use. So to eliminate confusion, that definition. Oh, in the version for. The special exception grant should be deleted.
So that's the second one in our pack packet.
Correct, it'd be the one on, if you look at page. Fifty, that's the special exception version and the actual errant O is on page fifty one.
So we're.
Of your package.
Rossi now, oh, student housing.
Correct, that that would be deleted and A through O would then be unchanged. Or whatever the end of it is, I guess it's O.
And just, this is not related to the topic at hand, but when we look at changes to ordinances where it says like A through N unchanged. Can we still list those? Because it still gives us a complete picture because I found myself saying, oh, well, they didn't address this, but then I looked. It was in the section that wasn't, that said it was unchanged.
Sure, that that can be done and it would just appear in regular font.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I know it adds to the length, but it helps to give a complete picture.
No, context is good.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Okay, so there's two different ones here. So from at that point. Ms. Powell, are you done with the the basic overview of these two?
Yeah, we visited these on previous occasions and what we're doing here is. Limiting this to the modification of the definitions that relate specifically to student housing as well as the criteria for student housing. And just as a refresher, because this whole process started a while ago. This was precipitated by a request for text amendment. For units within the village zone. And those units had more than nine bedrooms, which is why it did not fall into. The I can't remember if it's the boarding house or rooming house definition, but it. So that took it outside that definition and Nagila had previously prepared a really nifty little chart. That set forth the different residential uses permitted in each of your zones. So I do have, I have a single copy of that if you want to go back and refer to it, but it is really a helpful. Helpful document. She handed that out at at a prior meeting and I can't frankly remember which one it was.
Yeah, that's, I think that's part of the, you know, trying to pull all the documents from the previous meetings and make sure we have everything so that would have. Probably been helpful to have in the packet too.
Sure, if you'd like, I mean, we can get it copied and handed out.
That would be perfect. Thank you. Miss. So from there, is there a representative for the applicant here to?
They they were informed that it was on the agenda tonight and I don't see them.
Okay. All right, so at that point, we. Move on down to give the public an opportunity to speak. So there is a five minute time limit if you get up to speak in a public hearing instead of a four minute time limit. So good news, you have a little extra time. When you get up, if you could please state your name and whether you live within the town limits or not, you don't have to give your address. And then watch the little timer in front of you. It tells you how much time you have left and the little lights will count down. And please don't forget to press the button on the microphone to turn it red so we can hear you. So having said that, turning to our first public comment for student housing, we have Ms. Gail Fowler. Where, where'd you go? Oh, there she is.
So to make sure I cover this as quickly as possible, I'm going to read my notes. I'm a newcomer to the village, as most of you know, and I'm against codifying student housing in ordinance seventeen thirty six oh twenty.
Ms. Fowler, can you start with your name and whether you're in or out?
Oh, I'm sorry, Gail Fowler, East Main Street.
Thank you.
In fact, that's what I was just going to say before purchasing the property on East Main Street. Which was less than two years ago, I inquired about approved uses in the village zone. And I was directed to this particular ordinance, which did not include student housing. Among the approved uses anyway. So my feeling is amending the village zone to include student housing would allow a higher volume of transient seasonal residence. To occupy homes and buildings, potentially hampering the village's sense of neighborhood and community. Discouraging business growth and negatively impacting future grants. Expanding the village zone to include student housing, if not handled carefully. Could have a detrimental impact on ordinary citizens living in the village zone. In my opinion, it would require a set of new ordinances that directly address known issues associated with students. Or stricter enforcement of the ordinances we already have. To protect the people who did not choose to live where student housing was a permitted use. It also seems like it's an unfair burden to the village zone to put the most transient type of housing there. Student housing doesn't generally contribute to or improve neighborhoods or the business community. In fact, studies have shown it often degrades neighborhoods. And it's not like the students who apparently have been living in town for years have inspired a town renaissance. Or attracted new businesses to town. And I didn't have to be here that long to notice that. Personally, I would not have purchased or renovated our home had student housing been a permitted use in the village zone. I don't want to be living near a frat house or anything like that. I've understand from my neighbors that there have been previous issues with student occupied housing where they were constantly calling the police. I don't want to live like that. I believe it'll discourage both retirees and young families from investing in older properties and improving like the look of the downtown area. And it may actually encourage existing property owners to invest in more profitable student housing. While I have no objection to owner occupied homes renting a limited number of rooms to college students. These properties should be subject to existing conditions, excuse me, already outlined in ordinance seventeen thirty six oh nine oh. In conclusion, my husband and I selected Emmitsburg for our new home because we saw the potential of living in a walkable village community. With restaurants, shops, professional offices, as well as affordable housing for young families, professionals and retirees. I ask if that's a vision we all share. Then I ask you all to lay the groundwork for building that community, because if you build it, they will come. You just have to decide. Who is the they you want to attract?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Next up, we have Melinda Sweeney.
Hello. I'm new at this, so I don't know if I'm doing this correctly or not, but I mainly have questions more than I have comments.
So just start with name and if you're in or.
Melinda Sweeney, I'm living in town of Emmitsburg.
There you go.
I don't, you know, I don't know if this, I have more questions than comments, basically. First of all, I don't know what, where, what's the town village? What does that encompass? Is that just? Main street or does it flow into the developments surrounding? Or what's it encompass?
Sorry, it's mostly along Main Street and southern, north and south Eden Avenue.
So that there is a definition of the zone.
Right, there's a zoning map.
And so would that ever be changed to encompass surrounding community developments? Because of this?
Not because of this, the zoning map can change as a result of the change in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is. Mandatorily reviewed every ten years and it may be reviewed. More frequently, should the governing bodies so decide, but it's, it would be as a result of a comp plan amendment.
So if this ordinance is approved, then would it have any jurisdiction to any surrounding communities? That are governed by bylaws of that specific development? If you have HOA bylaws, would this supersede? Those bylaws?
You're still restricted by the bylaws of the HOA.
So this would not affect what the, anything that bylaws have.
Well, first, this is public comment, so I don't know how much of a Q and A you want me to get into, but I'm happy to answer the question. So HOAs, when when a person takes a decision to buy a home in an HOA, you.
I understand that. My question is whether or not this would supersede that. No. Okay, fine. I don't, I don't need a education. That was, I just wanted to have that question answered. And it seems like part of the. Ordinance that's going to need to be changed is going to be parking. So I guess a comment that I would have. About parking is this, if it's just in a town village, there's not a whole lot of parking along Main Street to start with. So. How are we going to accommodate? Five or six students with parking along Main Street? Where where would these people park?
All of this is provided in the draft ordinance.
Okay, and the last question is, did the college come forth and say that there was a shortage in? Dorm rooms at the college? Is that why?
I think the last that we learned is that they do not have a shortage of dorms. I believe they have. We determined over a hundred available beds.
I think the last I spoke to someone and maybe President Joyce can, it's it's between eighty and a hundred, had eighteen hundred rooms open last year.
Okay, that's it. Thanks. Thank you. Okay. And then, oh my goodness, you're going to have to, excuse me, but I can, is it, is this Jerry? Is it? That's, thank you. Come on up. We should put, please, please print clearly. It's our.
Oh, excuse me, sorry, your mic is not on.
There we go, sorry. Once again, my name is Jerry Joyce. I'm the president of Mount St. Mary's University, but I'm also new to Emmitsburg and a resident living on Old Emmitsburg Road with my family. And this is a wonderful community. I'll start there. So and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. To clarify, we do not have a housing shortage. We have over a hundred beds that are available right now for our students. One of the things I just wanted to convey here tonight is that as I came in as a new president. My style, I was at my last institution for thirty three years is building relationships, not only within our community, but within the community that surrounds us. I have been, I have personally have been impressed with the behavior of our students. On certain times that I I have an eight year old who goes to Mother's seat and then we did trick or treating on Main Street this year. I was really surprised and pleasantly surprised the number of students that's a part of that. Because you can have town gown issues when you have a college or a university within a community. My goal for the mount and for Emmitsburg is to be more hand in glove and have more relationships. And that means we need to be part of the community. So ordinances that allow our students not to be a part of it. And be able to live in certain areas will, you know, send them other places. And I I would prefer to really build up Emmitsburg and the relationship between the university. And the town. Students that come to your community. And not all students do are not because they don't have housing or they can't live on campus. It's almost that they need to do that as part of their development. They have this idea of wanting to live independently. We tend to find that many of our juniors go off campus and because specifically the men, when they. Realize they have to cook and clean for themselves, return to campus the following year. So I I'm not here to dissuade you from doing anything. That's not my role here, but to really say. My goal as the new president is to build those relationships and to really be a part of the community. I'd like, and I shared this with the planning commission when we met a couple of weeks ago, you know, we'd like more businesses where our students can patronage. And we also would like to be able to send our parents when they're visiting. We have a lot of parents that visit because of our sporting events. And have more of the community involved on our campus as well, bringing them over to. The the Arc, the Athletic Recreation Center over on the other side of fifteen. So I asked you to consider that as we want to be a part of this community if you will have us. We by no means believe that there won't ever be problems and I apologize if there has been problems in the past. And I would hope that we would, you know, have the relationship that you would call the university because we're responsible for them as well. My goal is not to necessarily be punitive as my first step. But really, you didn't make the best decision. How can we get you on the right path and be productive members of of this society? You know, part of our mission is producing ethical leaders with service to God and others. You're the others in this scenario and we want them to be a part of it. I want you to be as proud of our students as we are. So thank you very much for allowing me to say a few words this evening and thank you for welcoming to this community.
Thank you very much. That's all the public comment we had for student housing. So at this point. We don't need to have a rebuttal because the applicant is not here. So we will be closing the public hearing and then having a discussion. As far as how we would like to proceed. So is there? A motion to, I need a motion to close the public hearing, Ms. Powell. I assume I do. Is there a motion to close the public?
No, you just close it.
I just closed it. All right. Closed. So now we are moving on to discussion with the board on how we'd wish to proceed. Who would like to begin?
I guess I'll, I'll start with the the can of worms. Just to, you know, to reiterate, we are talking about the village zone only and not the town. I know we've talked about housing and rentals for the entire town. This particular case, we're addressing just in the village zone where. Currently, it would be by exception only. So if we're changing that. You know, we basically have two proposals. One, they would allow it, any property owner to turn it into student housing in the village zone. You know, at will and at the market's desire. The other basically, while we're. We put in some defining things in there, you know, with post-secondary education in colleges. At cleaning it up, but basically keeping it as an exception so we can control the number of student housing within the village zone. I I think from my personal, as I've said, when I always have a problem as a property and when somebody tells me who I can rent to and who I can't rent to. Sticks in my crawl, but I also have to admit the idea of mainstream becoming a bunch of fraternities and sororities. Bother me. I don't want to see that either. And I think if we go down the route and make it by exceptions, we can allow. The students to live in there because we are a college town. I know people don't like to admit that, but we are, and that's the nature of the beast. And the students are a vibrant members of this community. And so I I just want to. As again, as I've said in the past, I think it's, we continue to rule by exception and way we can control the number of students. That way we don't end up. You know, with five houses in a row is student housing, but we can continue to welcome and encourage students to live within the village zone at the same time. And make sure that the housing is adequate for them. And I don't want landlords taking advantage of the students. And this also gives us that ability.
So when you talk about limiting student housing, are you talking about because of the exception?
Because the exception, so anytime you would want to do student housing, it would have to be granted an exception inside the village zone, the same as it is currently.
I I agree with partially what you're saying. So the, I do like the ordinance as it, as a special exception. But I don't agree that it, it allows us to re, to restrict the number because the the items here that. Meet the exception. Are spelled out. So if the house meets it and there's four, five, six in a row, meets is meets. So I think that might be something you want to add or something.
I I would be in favor of adding that language.
In the past, we had talked about no frat houses, period. I do like the ordinance written. I know I had some issues with it in the past, but as it's written today or drafted today, but as as a special exception, I do like that. But you know, the leeway is all here is to say, it's items one through four, and if they meet that. Then the special exception should be met and should be agreed upon based on the ordinance. So if you want something.
Good point.
If you want to have something to stand out that says, we can say no for blank reason.
Right, so. Very valid point. Glad you brought that up. I I personally, I like as people have said, if you get state college where they put the rule in. They put a limit on how many feet student housing could be to each other, the kind of limit. So it couldn't be right next door to each other and it became. You know, if you got there first, you were the exemption. So the guy next door, sorry, well, you beat me to it this year. You can't have it.
Yeah, and I think. Yeah, and I think just the nature of the beast of the way that, that, that current village zone is, item one's gonna make the restriction more than anything.
Yeah.
Trying to meet off-street parking spaces shall be provided for each bedroom.
Yeah, one, one student, one space per student.
But there's not gonna be many houses on Main Street to really have that additional amount of space to be, be able to provide legitimate off-street parking that's, meets the off-street parking regulations the town has.
Yeah.
Well, that, but I, I would disagree with that because I think legitimate, who's going to, how would we police that? How would we know that they do have legitimate off-street parking? And, you know, I did have one.
It's a zoning request. They had, they would have to submit verification. I mean, the property, the property's gonna tell.
Right, but who checks that? Us?
It's gonna be the town.
Yeah, that would be our, our zoning. That's why I said this also gives us that, that in is we gotta grant an exemption to say, is the place habitable?
I think, I think my hesitation is, it's not an allowed, allowed in our current zoning, and we haven't enforced it until it came up now. So looking at, is this something that the town will truly enforce? Is something that I'm.
Parking or?
No, just to make sure that, how, how would you know? How would we know?
I, I can speak to this. So most small municipalities, and of course, you're among small municipalities. The enforcement of the code, it's really a complaint-driven, and I mean, that's just the reality.
I know.
And, and so if someone makes a complaint, then your zoning code enforcement officer goes and makes an investigation. And then either there's a finding of a violation, they get a notice, typically they get a warning. And then if they ignore the warning, then it is pursued. And then you can either go to court, there's a fine, and, you know, and so it goes. So that's the policing mechanism. I mean, and there's nothing wrong with it. That's just the way it is.
Right, except.
But Ms. Powell, just let me a- ask the question. It's all that it is. So we do it by exemption. And we're saying somebody comes in for an exemption and says, I has a five-bedroom place that they wanna rent out, and three, and three parking spaces. It ends there. But, because what I don't wanna get is after the fact, we approve these exemptions, and there's two parking spaces short, and all of a sudden, I got two students, somebody's threatening to put in the street.
You're not gonna know, they're just gonna do it.
Right, but that's why I don't wanna get that complaint. But if we know we're granting exemption to five bedrooms at that time, we know how many parking spaces they have there when we grant the exemption.
So, so when you change your use, what you're supposed to do, supposed to do, is apply for, um, a zoning permit to notify the town that there's a change in use. Both as a permitted use and as a special exception, there is a mandatory one off-street parking space per bedroom required. So that is, that is that. The test for a special exception isn't simply meeting the criteria set forth in the special exception. There's an additional test, the additional criterion, and this is hard for people to wrap their heads around because it's also hard to articulate in the first place. But the, the test for a special exception is, if it is granted, will the impact in this particular location be greater than it would be elsewhere within the zone? So for example, going to, um, you know, one house after another being student housing, um, or in close proximity, well, would the, would the impact be greater in that particular location if there was already an approved student housing unit there? Then the Board of Appeals, which has sole jurisdiction over special exceptions, could consider this and say, well, you know, the impact of putting it at, at one oh two Main Street is gonna be greater than it would be elsewhere because we've already got, um, student housing for nine people, you know, figure it out, um, at one oh five.
Right.
Or, right? And so, but then, but then it's, then there, then it is within the Board of Appeals determination to say, ixne on that particular location because it is too proximate.
Right, which would happen after the fact.
No, you have to get the, you have to get the special exception before you can proceed.
Where does it?
That's the way that, no.
Does it say that in here?
It doesn't have to, because that's the way special exceptions work.
It's the special exception. So I said, you're finding it ahead of time before people move in, because if you rely all after the fact, sooner or later, you're gonna end up evicting a student, which I don't wanna see.
Well, I mean, I mean, that's kind of the reason why we're here now is because there was a zoning violation. And we're trying to now react to make the, the ordinance fit this exception rather than enforcing the zoning ordinance as it stands. I think that we would be remiss to realize how many. Okay, so even if there's one space per bedroom, there, I, I believe there are still several properties that could, could meet that right now.
So if you look at that nifty little chart that Nigella did that was copied for all of you, if you see, if you look in the village zone column, you'll see what types of housing are currently allowed. So boarding house is allowed. A boarding house is up to five guests. A rooming house, which is not allowed in the village zone, is up to nine. Family, which is always a fun definition to deal with, is, it can be an individual or two or more persons related by blood or marriage, or a group of not more than five persons, not related by blood or marriage, living together as a single housekeeping group in a dwelling unit. So that definition doesn't meet the student housing definition, just FYI, because they're not living together as a single housekeeping unit. I mean, that's, that's when you have people that go out, they buy groceries together, they have meals together, everybody, you know, contributes to the household, if you will. So student housing wouldn't typically meet that criterion of family. So you're left with five, not more than five guests in a boarding house, which is already permitted. And then, as you said, the, and, and there was unfortunately a fair amount of Who Shot John and the zoning violation and the building, the permits that were issued with respect to the Otte House. That was a very confusing situation, which is what precipitated the text amendment request.
Maybe it wasn't, it was the Otte House.
It was Mr. Otte's House, not the Otte House.
Mr. Otte's House, not the Otte House. I beg your pardon. Um, so, so that's what precipitated his request for a text amendment. So, and that has a number of, of single bedrooms. And so that's why, I mean, it didn't, it did not meet the criteria for, or criterion for the boarding house of five guests. I mean, because there were so many single bedrooms in the two units, I think it was eleven. Because the way this is written, it's one student per bedroom with one off-street parking spot. So it is, there is a finite number of, you know, structures that could meet those criteria to begin with, but that's what we're looking at.
So technically, we could have student housing fall under boarding house as well.
Yeah, because there's no distinction on who the occupants are. But your boarding house, if you look at the definition on the second page of the chart, is a dwelling in which for compensation, lodging or meals, or both, are furnished to not more than five guests. So you've already got five.
Right. So this is, I mean, technically, we wouldn't, even if we didn't change anything, student housing could still be allowed for up to five in a unit.
That is correct.
So now we're looking at changing it so we can allow more than five.
If it meets those criteria, yes, that is correct.
Do you recall this conversation? I don't recall.
It, it was, we did, we did have that conversation. We got into the family, and there was disputes of whether college students shopping together constitute a family and everything that, and we, we also, remember, then got into the discussion with student housing, would we allow it to be a mixed use? Where you could have students and non-students in the same facility.
I recall you saying that student housing is student housing. So if you have a boarding house with five college students, is that student housing?
It does not become student housing because students are also people.
I understand.
And they can be guests.
I understand, but when I.
They could be five members of a boarding house, five students in a boarding house.
That is correct.
But when I asked, I, I get that, but when I asked it the last time, I said, what if somebody wanted to rent a room to a college student? And you said, no, that's not a permitted.
It depends on where the house is. If you're in a single-family home, if you're in R1, low density, if you look at that column, it is not permitted.
I, I think I can shed some light on the confusion. In the previous ordinance, in the definition for boarding house, it specifically was added, a boarding house shall not be used as student housing.
That's what it is.
Somebody took it out.
Right, and, and that was because it needs, that what you're considering has to conform to the advertisement. And the advertisement was for the modification or the, the addressing of student housing. Your planning or your zoning code does need some work and needs to be updated. But what was advertised relates to student housing, and because changing the definition of boarding house was not within the scope of the advertisement, it is not something that can be changed at this meeting.
Which, great point. I appreciate you bringing that up. And I, I just wanna say, we, we've let this linger for quite some time, and I think as Ms. Powell has now correctly pointed out, maybe we, we need, need to revisit and address that, but I think we shouldn't put off making a decision tonight either. You know, we can always come back and say, hey, we're gonna redefine what a boarding house is, but we can't go months and months and months and keep saying, well, that's, we're putting off the good for the perfect, and we may never find the perfect. It's, the, the longer we wait, the more cost everyone. We're just running up everybody's legal fees here.
Well, we, I'm sorry, go ahead. We had made other changes to the text amended amendment that was submitted by Mr. Otte's attorney. So why isn't, why can't we change anything else at this time, such as a boarding house cannot be used for student housing? Why can't we make that change?
You can't make that change tonight because you'd have to re-advertise it and say that you're changing the definitions for other terms and then identify them in the advertisement.
But that was in the previous one we looked at it.
It wasn't in the ad.
This was just about the ad. So we, we miscommunicated.
Only, this is only about the advertisement. That is correct. If you, if you want to address these other issues, then we simply need to say, including modifications of the definitions too, boom, 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 boom. So people are on notice because the, the state law requires that we publish in advance of the meeting at which the legislature is going to adopt the ordinance, an itemized list. It doesn't have to be hyper-specific, but it does need to give people a clue as to what's going to be considered. And in this case, the ad said, it referred to student housing. It didn't say, and we'll change the definition of boarding house, we'll change the definition of rooming house, we'll eliminate the definition of X or Y. It was strictly related to the student housing.
Do you know why that was taken out?
Nothing was taken out.
Why it wasn't mentioned in the ad, I think, is what she's asking. I'm not sure.
It's not in the current amendment, but it was in the prior amendment.
That's, that was the subject of a workshop and a discussion. It wasn't related to the adoption of the ordinance, and I don't know why it was or was not in this, the immediate advertisement that came out before this public meeting.
Okay. Okay. Um, so we have to go based on what was advertised and what we have in front of us?
Right, so, good. I just say here, and considering that, I said, we can always come back and bite and say, we wanna look at what boarding houses and get that. Because what I'm hearing consensus of the board and hearing everybody except for Commissioner Sweeney saying is, okay, they, they, we have some consensus of what we want, and what I'm hearing is, we wanna keep it as an exemption and everything, and how we can control that, but I'm, we wanna make changes, but I don't, we can vote on these two, which ones we wanna go today, and then say, hey, for our next meeting, we wanna discuss and put this up for our definition of boarding house or anything else, because we have the comprehensive plan coming up with all the zoning and everything else. So perfect opportunity to tie it all up.
That is correct. You could, you could do it because you're required to make modifications to your code. If your comprehensive plan also instructs that such modifications to your code should be made.
Which is not in our comprehensive plan.
If you're comprehen- well, I don't know what you're comprehen-
Zoning is in our comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, but not student housing.
Well, no, we can adjust, uh, in the Gila, correct me if I'm wrong, it's been a year since I was the one doing the comprehensive plan, is, we, we could certainly discuss zoning requirements as part of the comprehensive plan and any zoning language.
There's zoning language and housing diversity, and that counts as an umbrella term for student housing and the other types of housing.
You know, at, at our workshop, I mean, we spent a lot of time talking about this, and we, we talked about the complaints, you know, that had, have happened over many, many years. Um, you know, I believe there, the complaint originated with Mr. Otte's property due to trash noise and parking issues. But the text amendment doesn't address these issues in detail and how they're gonna be managed. Um, it also doesn't address how complaints will be handled, citations, fines, how property inspections will take place to ensure the international building codes have been met. It doesn't address disorderly behavior and owner and student responsibilities, all of which we had talked about at the workshop. There's no limitation on the number of student houses, and we already know that students live in areas outside the village zone, all over town. So I'm not opposed to students living in town, but I think we need to protect the quality, quality of life for our residents by ensuring a policy that's fair and equitable to all. And I don't think this politi- it's so vague, it just, if you have parking and a bedroom per student, then you can have student housing, period.
So you do have.
Nothing to protect anyone.
No, I, you have other ordinances that deal with, um, breaches of the peace. You have other ordinances that deal with trash. Under the special exception, there's a specific provision relating to trash and the receptacles. And so trash that's not contained within containers, if you will, would already be a littering problem. I mean, you already have other, I mean, so it's not as though people, and I'm not, I'm not espousing one way or another. I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that you do have regulations that address, you know, breaches of the peace, littering, and things of that nature. Not everything has to be restated in each single, specific permitted use.
But I don't think those, those ordinances, either they're not enforced or they don't work.
Well, it's like the, the trash. I'll give you an example. We, we redid the trash as part of the planning commission two years ago. I mean, we even got into languages, said you could only use steel cans, and we were like, what? Nobody uses steel garbage cans anymore. And we changed it. So we do have provisions that address like trash and everything. Now enforcement isn't totally upon the town. How strict we are in enforcement, how lax we are is incumbent on us.
I think that's why at our workshop, there was a consensus that we wanted to look at rental registration first before this was brought to public hearing. So I am confused at the order because that rental registration would have allowed us to have more control and guidelines and consequences, like for example, like Gettysburg, you can lose your student housing, um, status if, if you have so many violations. So and all of that would take management from the town. As it stands right now, I am not, if we are voting on either of these tonight, I'm not comfortable voting in favor of either of these tonight because I feel like all the work we did in the workshop, which is kind of like, was not addressed.
That, that's not, that's not a, a good statement, because what you're talking about, the parking, the trash, uh, the, the noise, everything, that's covered to every resident. I, just because I don't have students in my rental, I have to have parking spaces, I have to control my trash, I have to control the noise. So, you know, it sounds like we're gonna single out the students. And, and that's surely not fair. And if you all remember back when we asked the police to give us their report of where the problems were in town, they were not in student housing. They were in two of our apartment complexes, uh, that about sixty percent of their calls, uh, that do not have students in them. They have, have permanent residents. So I think you're, you're, you're looking into this, you know, the students are getting the blame for a lot of stuff that it's. You know, the students are getting blamed for a lot of stuff that it's not students. It's our, uh, day-to-day residents that, that are causing the problems here in town.
Well, I think the, the complaints were driven by Mr. Ott's property initially, not, not so much the other student.
And, and it does, and he corrected them. He, he meets all these now. He, he found the parking. He fixed the trash. He has done all those things. So that they are fixed.
So the way it stands right now, if student housing is allowed under boarding house or rooming house. Boarding house. I don't see the need for this one then. I don't see why we need to have or allow, even by exception, more than five in a unit.
Well, we, we have properties in town that are more than five bedrooms. So it, it's, that doesn't meet the definition of a boarding house. What do we want to do? I mean, and I, in the particular case that brought this up, we're talking about eleven bedrooms between two units. So he, he's over that line. It's, again, I think, is there a lot of other work that can be done? Most definitely. And we discussed a broader rental agreement or, or everything. And I think we should continue to move forward on this. But waiting for the per, to throw out the good, waiting for the perfect is a mistake in my opinion. We're covering, you know, if the concern is trash, noise.
Coming back to trash, but we're talking about prevalence of, if we're allowing properties to be renovated with more than five bedrooms. And I've had.
As an exemption.
Exactly. As an exemption, if you have enough parking and you have, you can, you know, I don't know why trash is even in here because that's just for everybody. You know, your trash is hidden. You have one space per bedroom, blah, 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 blah. Uh, you could renovate existing properties that are for sale in the village, village zone with additional bedrooms above five that are going to potentially be snapped up by investors because they know they can make so much more money.
Right.
Renting by bedroom versus as a unit.
Most definitely.
My concern. My concern is that we are giving the power. And I don't see how it is the town's problem to make sure a landlord, um, gets
Okay, so here, here.
Maximize the profit so much as what is our vision for the town? And if we want it limited, it should be, it should be stated ahead of time because we know how long it takes to get around to it.
Agreed. And, and it's, it's like I said, I wouldn't be in favor of like house after house next to each other.
So how would you limit?
Well, here, here's a question, Ms. Powell. So soon we get there and we grant it by exemption. So the appeals, could they say it's denied the exemption, saying it's not in the best interest of the town, just on that sole purpose?
The test is, does it meet criteria one through four under your special exception definition? And is the impact of allowing this particular use greater in the location where the person wants to put it? Then it would be elsewhere within the zone. So the example that I was talking about is if you have student housing already approved. And someone comes in and buys a house next door that has, I don't know, seven bedrooms. Then when the Board of Appeals looks at it, they could say, no, that's not good here because the addition of this particular student housing adjacent to an existing student housing is going to create an adverse burden that it wouldn't if it were put somewhere else within the village zone. Now, I'm not saying that's something that they would necessarily have to find, but it's something that they could find. And that's why you, I mean, you have a Board of Appeals for a reason. They're separated from the public, you know, from the elected officials. Just as your planning commission members are, um, you know, so.
But it would be subjective.
Well, it's.
Making that decision whether having two student houses side by side would be a problem.
That, well, it's.
Decision.
It's, it's a, it's a decision that's made in the best judgment of the board, the members of the Board of Appeals.
So the way it stands is we wouldn't be able to limit it other than the subjective opinion of the Board of Appeals.
Well.
It's not like we're saying twenty-five percent.
I, I guess. No, I'm not. Yeah, but you, you don't, you don't have a finite percentage. That is correct. But I don't, I don't know that it's fair to say subjective because this is a legal test that's applied. So if they take a decision and somebody doesn't like the decision and that decision is appealed and the person who is appealing the decision has standing to, to appeal it, um, then, or the town. Um, you know, then the courts would look at it and say, you know, yea or nay, depending upon the factors that are presented. The evidence that's presented at the Board of Appeals hearing.
So could, could we add a line that just said, and said it cannot be within five hundred feet or X feet of an existing student housing?
I, I, I think that's in our best interest. If it's not listed in a special exemptions, I don't think you would get that.
Yeah, because that's, that's what college does.
Case to case.
We didn't advertise it that way. So why can't we make that change and not?
Because you advertise that you are considering the adoption of an ordinance to permit student housing within the village zone. You don't have to articulate every single component of the ordinance because there is no criterion that says you have to publish the ordinance exactly in the format in which it would be adopted. What you have to do is provide the notice to the public that, yeah, we're going to talk about this tonight. We're going to vote on it. And if you have a position to take, then show up.
But it's the same subject matter.
But it's just, that is correct.
I, I think we can get around that by.
It's a different subject.
Saying it, it has to, to be X feet from an existing student.
Yeah, of course. You know, the, the legal test for this, because there's a legal test for everything that isn't necessarily always clear, is whether or not it's a material change and I, from what has been advertised. And I don't think that it would be a material change.
Commissioner Hoover, what do you think about footage requirement? What would you?
You know, pick a number. I mean, I.
Would you be comfortable with five hundred feet?
Five hundred is far enough apart to say that. And as I said earlier, we, we talked about no frat houses.
Right.
To be allowed, so.
We, we need to take care of that in your definitions.
And, and then also, um, one question I have, so let's, looking at this as the special exception. So it talks about maximum occupancy shall be limited to one student per bedroom. So in our previous drafts, we also, it was also noted and listed as, as owner occupied and, 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 and owner non-occupied. So.
I don't believe that owner occupied was a component of student.
That was the, that was just for the rentals. When we were talking about owner occupied.
Yeah, things got confusing because we were considering the rental registration. We had a workshop for rental registration as well, and I think things kind of got conflated a little bit.
Does that need to be listed and labeled that this is what it's, that that's what it is then non-owner occupied? So it's not expected that the owner, maybe husband, wife, whatever, you know, spouse doesn't have two people per bedroom. And then what's their car parking requirements as well? So is this intended, was this intended when it was written to be non-owner occupied?
That was its intent when it was written. Yes.
And I think that should be as noted as, that is the, one of the exceptions. Just so you know, if you do the, the five hundred feet, uh, apart, not sure where that number came from. But that's less than one house per block. You're, if, and how, the only reason I know that is every fire hydrant is two hundred and fifty feet away and there's one in each block. So, uh, you know, so there's a fire hydrant at the end of each block. So you'd only have, you'd have less than one house in a block. And what does that do to the current apartment buildings that have student housing? Will that affect those? They're not student housing.
This has no impact.
No impact at all.
If, and if an apartment building is.
It's a multi-dwelling.
Yeah, it's a multi-family dwelling unit and it's, it's got its own special little place. Yeah. Regardless of who happens to be occupying it.
But if the Otts on the corner rent to students, which I believe they do, then if the five hundred feet rule went into effect, we couldn't approve, is it David Ott's property?
But, but again, that's, that's the, the, the odd house apartments is a, is a multi, is a multi-dwelling unit. It's not student.
They don't rent to rent rooms individually?
No, they're individual apartments.
Wait, wait, I think we're talking two different things. The, the property in question wasn't multiple apartments within those two units. It was multiple bedrooms that he was renting.
That is absolutely correct. Single dwelling unit.
I think there's eleven bedrooms in the two units.
Yeah, there's.
That, the, the, the stuff, you know, above the odd house restaurant or apartments.
Yes, yeah, I just want to make that distinction. Yes, yes. I'm sorry. I just, I didn't know if we were on, talking the same language.
But a, but a, but a building or house or what have you that is, that is rented to multiple people as a multi-dwelling unit. That is its own use, multi-dwelling. So it's not, regardless if they're all students or what they are. It is not student housing because students live in it. It's whatever the zone has been, or whatever the use has been, been, been um, permitted for.
So like an apartment building?
Right. It's exempt from this.
Absolutely.
Age or where they go to school or whatever does, has nothing to do with its own.
Okay.
Well, just, just one more comment and then I'm, I'm going to be quiet. You know, uh, last month, we were, we were kind of in a panic because of the fire academy being closed. Uh, not having their students in town and not having, you know, getting the benefits of them. This potentially could have the same effect if we limit college students coming to town. Because not only do they spend their money, uh, but they, they work, uh, in a lot of businesses. So they're, they're helping our business owners. Uh, uh, and when the fire academy and Mount St. Mary's is in full swing, our population can double overnight. So we can go from a three thousand, uh, person community to a six thousand person community. And that's what keeps our businesses going. And, um, so I just want, I just hope we don't limit this too far. I understand your concerns, but I also know from living here all my life, the problems you are talking about are not college students. They are everyday residents that live in three or four of our apartment complexes.
Oh, okay. That's not fair because we do have video footage and emails directly related to some of those properties. So it, it's not fair to categorize either way. There are some that are fine. There are some that are not.
But there are some, it is, in college it is. And, and I will say, as somebody that went to a large institutions, we were much more troublesome than the students here that are in Emmitsburg and anything in any shape or form. What we're talking about now and, and, and address the, the mayor Davis is, I don't think we have a lot of current housing stock that would be up that are seven and eight bedrooms. There's not a lot of those out there right now inside the village zone.
So that's.
So we're talking about, you know, preventing people from developing this housing market. And as a landlord.
Preventing people.
It makes sense for you to do that because it makes you more money, you know, and the end all and be all. So do we want to regulate this in future? I don't think we're removing anyone from the marketplace right now of any place. It's impacted. It's preventing it from happening in the future.
I don't think it's preventing it. I think it is allowing it by special exception. They just know what they have to meet.
But if we grant the exceptions and say, okay, you have to have your parking. Parking is not that easy to come by. There's nothing in there saying, well, you have to pay for parking somewhere else. Now you got to have parking on the spot. And then if we add on top of that, that it can only be within X distance of an existing place. You've handicapped it. As the mayor said, if we, if you get two hundred and fifty feet, you're saying it's one house per block. You do five hundred, it's one every other block. It's, you can start drawing the line. How dense do you want it? The object is not to get rid of student housing. Students are part of this community and they're a vibrant part of the community.
I don't believe you're getting rid of the student housing. It, it may not be called student housing.
Right.
But the students, as they are today, will continue to live in multi-dwelling units.
Correct.
So whether they live in this particular type of housing, if we allow it, or they live in.
The smaller, the smaller units.
The number of students we have are going to be probably the same.
Right, because we're not regulating the, the five bedroom.
But are you going to congregate them into an area? Because that's the only thing.
It's, it's density.
That's right. So that's what, so that's what the student has, they congregate them, but they're still going to be here. Whether they be in a number of multi-dwelling units side by side or up and down the street from one another, or they have this type of house.
Right.
They get a few more on together in one spot.
Yeah.
So I don't think, I don't think with or without the ordinance, it will bring them to town or shoot them away from town.
Yeah. I, I think it's there. It's just that the density, they're all going to be right there together or are they going to be spread out? You know, it's, I, I, we're talking about a landlord taking advantage and saying, oh, well, this was four bedrooms. I can renovate and put a million dollars in here and add another three bedrooms and pay my mortgage just on those three additional. It's not, to me, that's not good for the town. It's not good for the students. It only is good for the landlord.
So I have one, I have one other question. I think this is going to be for staff or, or, or attorney. How is the town going to control item number four at the moment? But the, the dwelling unit must meet all reg, all, all requirements of the international building code. So how, how, how are we set up or are we set up if this takes effect? To deal with that special exception if somebody comes in and asks for it? What is the? I don't know that we have that mechanism in place yet.
We don't, but when you renovate, um, building, you have to get a building permit from the county. So they would be looking into it for, for sure.
But what if I'm not renovating? I have seven bedrooms. I, I don't, but. Somebody comes in and says they had seven bed, seven bedrooms. What are they renovating? So we would have no mechanism to.
Somebody would have to look.
Right, but, but.
Your zoning code enforcement.
Somebody's going to need that. The dwelling you must meet all requirements of the international building code. So it's going to be plumbing, electrical and all that. If we don't have that mechanism in place already.
That, that is true.
Problem.
That.
Well, we do. We, we rely on Frederick County. We do have that in place. Frederick County does our inspections. I understand that, but is Frederick County going to come up and do this inspection because we have a special exception for the, once it, this is adopted? And so Mike applies for this and he's awarded, but then let's say the next thirty days, sixty days, whatever. Is Frederick County going to come to do those type of inspections for us? I know they're due to build an inspection for a, a house that, or a building that is renovated because that's required to.
Yeah. So Frederick County would, would absolutely undertake that analysis if a building permit is required. If a building permit is not required, then the answer is no.
But then that becomes another issue. Right. The only thing you'll get then is the, uh, the fire marshals. They're required to do, uh, inspections on multi-family units. Uh, I can't tell you exactly.
For life safety.
Yes. So when they see an electrical thing, then they call the electrical people and they come. So that's how that works.
Right. I, I don't, do they, do they look at ingress and egress?
Yes.
Oh, well, that's a big issue. Yeah.
It would.
You know.
That's one change. One concern I have is that, that, that's not fully ready to be addressed. That, that item number four is not ready to be addressed yet. You add an additional footage and a new frat house certainly helps me.
Which is.
Don't, don't we have regulations now for fraternities and sororities that are already?
That, so fraternities and sororities are only allowable as a special exception.
Okay. Yeah, I thought we already had regulations.
Yeah, and I don't think you actually have any.
No, there's none that might.
Not legally.
We got sports teams, but no fraternity or sorority.
I thought I saw in the original text amendment that was proposed that it was, there was a strike through on it.
That's correct, but the reason it's not in here now is because of the ad. So if you want to change definitions, we can just list the definitions that are being changed. And then it would be the subject of a separate hearing. If you take action on these tonight, if you don't, and you say, okay, well, we want X, Y, and Z done. Then we re-advertise and do X, Y, and Z in addition to the student housing. But because there are a lot of little wrinkles in your code, which hasn't really been looked at in a really long time. You know, it's sort of, if, I can never remember if it's the mouse you're giving a muffin or the moose, but it's that kind of.
You give a mouse a cookie.
Okay.
A moose a muffin.
Right. Yeah. And then he'll want something to go with it and something to go with it. Right? And so, so that's, in some respects, that relates to Commissioner Hagan's comment about, you know, perfect being the enemy of the good, but it's certainly up to the pleasure of the board.
I mean, currently the students aren't allowed to live in Brookfield or Pembroke or Silo Hill or Emmett Ridge. Only on Main Street and North Seton and South Seton, if this is passed.
No, there are.
Now, this only.
This is only talking about village.
Village zone. No, it has impact.
Right. But, but I'm saying, so the only people who are affected by this are people who live in the village zone.
Correct.
On Main Street or North Seton or South Seton. I, I think there needs to be more protections in the ordinance for those residents. And I think we should cap it. Now, if boarding houses, you can have up to five bedrooms. and rent them to students as is without us approving this, then what's the point of approving it?
This is future to to.
It doesn't help anyone.
No, it it helps the people. If I have a landlord that has a five bedroom house and says, I can spend a million dollars and add another three or four bedrooms and make mint out, we're controlling that. We're preventing it from turning into these large ten and eleven bedrooms.
But we're not, though, because it says as long as you have.
Well, if we say it's more. Right, five or less you can, but you can't do ten or eleven bedrooms in a house.
See, so the whole this whole thing happened. Let's just this 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 became an issue when two single family dwelling unit permits were applied for in connection with a a building that was owned by Mr. Ott. There is a debate with respect to what was actually represented at the time about the use. And that's how and then there was a trash issue that came to the attention of the code enforcement. And during the course of the investigation, it was like, okay, well, wait a minute. This is now being used as housing for people who are not acting as a family unit under the definition of your code. And the two units or one of the two units exceeded the the number five. And I can't remember which unit it was, but one of them exceeded the five person limit of the boarding house definition, which is what precipitated the application for the text amendment by Mr. Ott. Correct. So it's not preventing student housing in.
Anything under five bedrooms.
Anything under five bedrooms. So I think now, like you said, we could we could go around and around.
He's the only I don't think he's the only house in the in Emmitsburg has the level, but it's because combined both houses together.
Right, no, I don't think.
One had six rooms, one had five or one had seven, one had four.
One hadn't.
It's a six and five. Six and five.
Six and five. It was seven. No, seven and four.
Seven and four.
Yeah, so it was the seven bedroom unit that tipped the analysis. Right, so anything six bedrooms and more would not would would tip that. Right.
Right, the goal of this ordinance is to control that.
You keep saying that, though, but the goal of this ordinance is to allow it by special exception. I don't understand.
But that but it's by exception. So if the town has to agree to it, it has to meet criteria. And if we say you can only have it with an X number of feet, we limit the the number per block.
That's not in here right now.
We are only talking about the village zone.
Okay, well, that's not listed right now. That's why we don't have we which is why the at the workshop, we were talking about potentially looking at the rental registration to allow for some of these limits.
We can still go back and do a rental registration, put all this stuff into a rental registration bill.
Yeah, and then you're going to want to pull it back. Once we we release it to the wild, like a wild animal, and then we're going to put more limits in place after. See, I feel like that's putting the cart before the horse. The way it stands right now, I think there needs to be more concrete definitions on you know, or properties that have more than six bedrooms and how we want to handle that. Or if we do at all, I think it's not going to be kicking out anybody that's there except maybe the one in the seven unit. But I'm more than happy to entertain anybody who has a motion on either of these ordinances.
I'd like to move forward with it by exception with the added language. They can't be within five hundred. Add line five. They can't be within five hundred feet of an existing student housing location.
Mayor Davis, did you say the five hundred feet means it's basically just one house away? Oh, I'm sorry. Block and a half. I'm sorry. Never mind.
To two hundred and fifty feet per fire hydrant.
Okay, so which ordinance are you suggesting?
The second one. And then under section B, I'd add a number five. They say that it can't exist within five hundred feet of existing student housing.
Do you want to also include boarding houses?
Because can we can we do that today?
If well, because you're not affecting the boarding house registration or permission, it's your what I was saying.
Okay, no, I I get what you I misunderstood. Sorry, you're correct. They're saying that the student housing can't be within five hundred feet of an existing board of an existing student housing or boarding house. So it limits it, cuts it out both of there. Thank you for that. I didn't think of that.
So how did are these labeled differently that he would need to state? Because there's two different. It would be the one on page forty seven of your packet. Wait, the one on page forty seven is the. Oh, sorry. All encompassing one.
Yeah, we want to skip.
No, it's page fifty. It starts on page fifty.
Fifty is the one that I'm discussing.
Sorry about that. So, huh, okay. Did you say that was a block and a half, Mayor Davis? Five hundred feet? Mr. Hagan or Commissioner Hagan, can you restate your motion again, just so I can hear it clearly?
My.
Motion for the second proposed ordinance.
Motion for the second purported second the second ordinance for the the twenty five dash O two under section B, add number five, the the dwelling unit must not be within five hundred feet of an existing boarding house or student housing unit.
Okay. All right, is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Um, second by Commissioner Sweeney. Further comments, questions?
Yes, I'm sorry. I stopped there for a minute, but so that so that puts us on page fifty one of eighty one. Items one through four stay the same, and you're going to add item number five only the five hundred feet that you just talked about. Correct. And that would be of an existing student housing or a boarding house. Right, either or, okay. Okay.
You know, if we don't, if I don't approve this, then you can literally have a student house side by side by side by side. Right?
Yes.
If it's under five bedroom, there wouldn't be. You could turn every five bedroom house into a student house if this is not approved. Well, wait a minute.
Multi dwelling. Multi dwelling. You cannot get the designation of student housing.
Your your current ordinance permits boarding houses within the village zone and a boarding house is defined as lodging or meals or both for up to five guests. That is the definition of boarding house. That is already a permitted use. Right, so it would limit those boarding houses for students to five hundred feet apart.
No, no, student.
No, because student housing, they're saying would be categorized at six bedrooms or more, boarding houses under five bedrooms. Right, but you couldn't have a student boarding house with five bedrooms.
No.
Within five hundred feet.
Yes, you could have five, five bedroom, five bedroom, five bedroom next door to each other. That's a separate ordinance we'd have to address.
This says five hundred feet between student housing or boarding house.
Right, so the student housing can't be within five hundred feet of a boarding house is what we're saying. The boarding house is.
Oh, five hundred feet of a boarding house.
Right. I think what she's trying to say is I think what she's trying to say is if I get a student house, if I get a house and I have four bedrooms or five bedrooms, I can label it as student housing if I go for that zone. Right. It doesn't have to be six or more. Right. Right, up to but not more than.
And they can be side by side by side by side.
Right, as long as you call it a boarding house. We don't. We can't regulate that currently.
Okay. Understood.
The bigger stuff, even if I have a five. Student houses. It's not student housing. If I want to put a six bedroom and I already have a five bedroom house there, I can say, nope, sorry, that's against the rules.
No, the the way it was worded, I thought that if you had a boarding house being used for students, it had to be five hundred feet from another one.
No, we'd have to. We'd have to re come back and do a separate rule if we want to guard boarding houses and rentals. And I think that's ideal when we talk about a rental registry.
So this doesn't limit the number of five bedroom boarding houses for students within the village zone or provide protections for. Yeah, that because well, because it's already permitted.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay. Any other comments before we go to a vote? No, okay. All right, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All against?
I will. I'll go aye too.
All right, so let me try that again. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All against?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries three to zero.
Three to two.
Three, oh, geez. I'm telling you, the closer we get to nine o'clock, my brain turns spaghetti, so. I know mine's already there too. So thank you for correcting me. It's going to be a group effort at this point in the evening. Um. I don't either. I need to go back. I don't think that was number one on our agenda. We have eleven more to go. Okay. Number two is yet another public hearing for consideration of ordinance twenty five dash fourteen amendment to chapter thirteen water rates. Oh, I don't. I have no idea. It's in there somewhere. Have fun finding it. Okay. Our next agenda item will be to hold a public hearing on the proposed ordinance twenty five dash fourteen amendment to chapter thirteen water rates. At this time, the public hearing shall commence. Ms. Willetts, has the hearing been properly advertised?
Yes.
If anyone intends to provide testimony or if you signed up to speak on water rates, if anyone intends to provide testimony during public hearing, please raise your right hand and give the following oath. Do you solemnly swear and or affirm under penalties of perjury that testimony given to you by you in these proceedings will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please state I do. There should be two people saying I do. I don't even see anybody raising their hand. I might have lost you guys somewhere. Marie and Debbie, are you here? Did you want to do public comment for water rates? Oh, can you can you swear first? And then I'll bring you up for public commenting. I do. Was that a? Okay, thank you. Okay, so then at this point, we before we call you up, we turn it over to the town attorney. Do we?
We we actually don't have anything for the water. Well, I take that back. There's one that Ms. Powell wanted to address, and it's been in the ordinance for a while.
Yes.
I'll let her go ahead and handle that.
Yeah, and so and it's up to you because this is obviously something that we can add to our omnibus. You know, long list. But if you look at page forty one, item C, thirteen point oh, four point oh, one, oh, subpart C, it says the town of Emmitsburg is the operator of a public water system discourages and does not support or recommend private or individual water wells within its service areas except for building cooling purposes when approved by the mayor and board of commissioners. Any and all private and individual wells that do exist within Emmitsburg Public Water Service Area must meet all state and county standards, requirements and regulations. Elsewhere in your code, it's verboten to have a private well when you're in the town limits. And so it may be appropriate. And I think that this is fair game for tonight's hearing, given the advertisement, but to say the town of Emmitsburg does not permit private wells within the town limits. Obviously, anything that's grandfathered in before the passage of the ordinance would be grandfathered in. But this would make it more consistent with the rest of your code. Right, I thought I saw that somewhere else. Yeah, it is somewhere else. Okay, yeah.
Can it?
Yeah.
So so one of the only one thing we have is that I know there is a couple of wells around that is for irrigation and things of that nature, non potable water. There was or I believe there's I was assuming there's still.
I think those are grandfathered in.
Correct.
Yeah, so so that's that doesn't change.
Okay.
Okay, any.
And I think like you said, that elsewhere in the ordinance, it says none can be drilled, I believe.
Yeah, you well, you you if 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 a water line is put in, there's an obligation to connect. And that's in your code. And and your code also says that if you want public water and you're not in the town, then you have to be annexed in.
Right.
So you kind of covered the bases there. I'm fine with that change. Anybody have an issue with that change as part of this? Okay, so overall, in the water rates, just to summarize, we're going from thirty six percent down to fifteen and three percent or the consumer price index, whatever is greater from those from every year after. But the board of commissioners will review the water usage charge annually if they determine that a rate increase or decrease other than that set set forth. In the ordinance, they shall amend the ordinance no later than March thirty first of each year. So those that's the summary as best as I can describe. Did I miss anything?
Correct. The only other change was which I had sent to the board was increasing the mid cycle reading from twenty five dollars to fifty dollars.
Yes, so that's if somebody needs their meter red in the middle. You said it's usually for people closing on, yeah, real estate. Okay, which is in line with other municipalities. Okay. All right. All right, at this point, we get to move on to public comment. So Marie.
All right, my name is Marie Marie Williams and I live in Emmitsburg. I have some questions. I just, you know, about the water bill. Um, and I was wondering, I see that, okay, they call it the water bill, but there's a lot of things that are added there. Like, of course, the sewage, the trash, save the bay, tipping. I was wondering if that could be changed or we could do some, you know, have the trash bill separate from the water bill and maybe it wouldn't be too on your face like when you come in. Also, um, has there been a survey done of how many people buy water to drink? And also use it in their coffee machines because a lot of they say you can't use the local water. Of course, we, you know, there have been episodes of brown water. Um, the taste is not very well, you know, they even brush your teeth. So that's my question. And what's that's what I just wanted to bring forward that look over that and see what, you know, can be changed with the so called water bill. Okay. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Debbie, we had you listed too. Did you want to come up? Oh, okay, perfect. So just just for the record for, you know, Debbie says she has no, she's she's been listening and she's good. Okay. So thank you and thank you both for coming out tonight. We do appreciate that residential input. And then we don't have a rebuttal. So at this time, we can close the public hearing and move on to discussion. The hearing is closed. The hearing is closed. Discussion. Or how would you like to proceed? Or a motion, or whatever you'd like. I'm fine with a motion. Okay. You are. Um. Hold on, I changed the page. Yeah. So it would just be on page forty, if you're looking.
Forty-one.
Page forty, hold a public hearing in consideration ordinance twenty-five dash fourteen amendment to chapter thirteen water rates. So I make a motion to approve an ordinance to amend title thirteen of the Code of Emmitsburg entitled Public Services to amend the water rates, which would be
As discussed.
Ordinance twenty-five dash fourteen.
Ordinance twenty-five dash fourteen.
Thank you. Thank you for the second, Commissioner Hoover. Any further discussion or questions?
Is that as modified?
Oh, as modified.
Modified.
Do we need to restate, or is that good? Alright, as modified.
Yes.
Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All against?
Nay.
And any abstentions? Okay, so motion carries. Four to one with Commissioner Sweeney against. And then, we're moving on to Oh, the, the budget. Is there another? Page fifty-three? Wait, wait, wait.
Four.
I'm all. Never mind.
Number four.
Oh, maybe I missed one. Yeah, we, we moved things out of order. So we're doing number three, which is approval of ordinance twenty-five dash twelve, town of Emmitsburg, FY twenty-six budget. Hey. As far as the budget goes, I know we didn't get the, the full printout, but I do appreciate that it sent the, like, highlights in a bulged format that's easy to read. This the only question I had as far as, you know, did we receive clarification on going over the three percent merit increase that's that's per code?
Yes, I confirmed with Mr. Adams and Ms. Powell, your authority lies in the charter with the, as a charter states, you have the authority to fix salaries.
So, the three percent is just a guideline?
So you approved the COLA at three percent.
Correct.
And then you had the merit in front of you, which ranged anywhere from zero to three percent. And then, the two employees that were above the COLA and the merit, you, you have the authority to fix salaries. You can, you can fix, you can fix anybody's salary at what you want to fix it at.
Okay.
So that does give you the authority to go above the COLA and merit.
Okay, I, I'm glad to have that clarification. In that case, I would think that would make sense to discuss separately. Like, I'm fine with doing the three percent. We already did the COLA, but the three percent merit, but it would be interesting to hear the justification to go up higher. And I don't know if this is the appropriate forum to do that. Because we don't want to get into the nitty-gritty of what people are doing, but that is a big jump that we haven't seen before. We haven't seen going above three percent merit. So and maybe it's something as simple as approving the budget with the three percent merit, and then eighteen more, we could discuss in a, in a closed session and go from there.
No, we can, we can talk about it here. I don't have a problem talking about it here. It's, it's, it's real simple. The two positions that we are talking about are specialty positions that, right now, are well below the, the average of what other municipalities are paying. And I do know for a fact that there are municipalities after one of our employees. And I don't want to take the, the chance of, of losing them, because there's nobody to replace them. The other position is a licensed position that at the mayor's conference, and I've, I think I've told you all this before, in southern Maryland and on the eastern shore, they can't even find anybody to fulfill their license requirements for water and sewer, where they have just one person that serves six or seven municipalities, and they, they drive around all day and just sign off on paperwork, because there's such a a limited number of people holding those certifications. And again, that person is, he's making what they would usually make to run one plant. And we have this gentleman running both our water and sewer. Our whole water and sewer crew of, of five or six people. That's what it takes to run just a sewer plant of our size. And these guys are finding a way to be able to do both. And so, we're, we're getting quite the bang for the buck, and we have good people, and we just can't afford to lose them, and the competition's out there.
I do, I do think that one position you're talking about for water definitely is justified, especially when you look at the midpoint. I don't really think he's close to the midpoint for that, so if I'm surprised that jump's not higher, to, because if we're looking at making one more competitive, I would expect someone in the water position to also have the, if we're trying to move them closer to that mid-range. You know. I mean, because I don't think he's had the jump in salary that the other position has had over the last two years. So that's why I wanted to, to take it into more discussion, but. Well, the additional increase, I think, for that water person was point two percent. Did both individuals receive a three percent merit based on their performance plan? So any recommendation above three percent is an actual salary adjustment? Did they both earn three percent based on their performance plan?
Yes.
Okay, so anything above that is a true
Increase, yes.
And if you remember correctly, when we did hire our town planner, there was no one else out there. Remember, we had, we were contracting out, and there just wasn't anyone there, and it's a specialty. And, and what made me realize that we needed to do something, when the state of Maryland came and reviewed our comprehensive plan, they asked me what contractor we used to write that plan. And, because it was so well-written, and that would have been a, a very costly contract, if we'd had to bring someone in. So our town planner was able to do above and beyond what was expected of her, and, and we need to compensate our employees for that.
So there was no additional assistance from other people with planning backgrounds to help her in those endeavors?
Well, it was the, the community stepped in and helped, but that's, that's how the comprehensive plan is, is written. But no, the plan itself was written by our town planner.
Alright, I believe those are both grade elevens, is that correct? I can look. Yeah. I believe so. I would like to advocate for the water position to be closer to the midpoint. I mean, if we're doing that for the town planner, I don't see why we would do that. We wouldn't consider that for our lead water and sewer. To make him more competitive, because he is invaluable, and he's in that leadership position. So, if, if we're going to compare two grade elevens, then that would be something to consider moving forward, because, like you said, we could lose him with a better offer as well. And that's going to be, that's going to be the case for anybody. If anybody gets a better offer, they have the opportunity to leave. So, yeah, my concern was that the jump in salary for how quickly. And I will leave it at that.
Just the way in is on all this. It, it's a jump, but I worked for over a year on the comprehensive plan with her and saw the dedication, and she had to put up with me come up with stupid little ideas, reining me in and keeping the, the things important, and she came up with a lot of incredibly great ideas, and I think will benefit the town. And I've done comprehensive plans in the past, and the, the reach out, you know, not only is my role as the chair of the planning commissioner, but as the mayor appointed a small committee of us to work with the community in that feedback. There was a lot of detailed work that was done, that was fed back to us, and it was all done at a pretty extraordinary level.
I agree. I agree. So is the ideal is to, if the budget is passed, those two positions also are, are branded the additional, I don't know what it is. The amount over to three percent, I don't know how much additional.
The, the additional is included in the budget right now.
So the financial portion is what would be approved. And then, from what you, when you talk to the town attorneys, then do we have to take another action to set the salary, or is that part of the budget?
It's all part of it.
It would be part of it.
It's all one.
Yes.
One motion covers it all.
That's correct.
That's the ideal.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Hoover, the one salary adjustment is four percent above the COLA and the merit. And then the other one is point two percent above the COLA and the merit. And I agree that we should, that point two percent should be raised for the water and sewer supervisor. I think it's low. And I think that's really my own, the concern I'm saying is that that the one position that has the highest jump has had incremental jumps year after year, whereas the other grade eleven has not had comparable jumps.
So you're, 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 if I'm understanding correctly, if you're gonna do one, but if you want to do them both, do them equally, or somewhat more closely.
Well, I, I mean, that was what I was interested in hearing more about, which I don't think is, is appropriate, but I mean, we also can't continue to sustain the, the salary increases for the, the planner position that we've been doing over the last two, three years, however long.
I don't believe we've increased her salary outside of COLA and merit. There hasn't been any additional increase outside of COLA and merit.
Well, that, this is where I don't want to get into like dollar amounts.
Right, no, I'm just saying there hasn't been anything additional outside of COLA and merit. They both have received COLA and merit during their employment here.
So this would be the first, either, either.
Additional.
Got more.
This would be, this is the first time they would receive anything additional. Correct. Yes.
And, and I'm all about taking care of the, the water and sewer superintendent, but the reason that we didn't is because of the lack of funding in the water fund.
I understand.
And we just, we didn't help that any.
I understand, but, you know, the same, I understand, I get that, but it's a big jump. Alright. Is there a motion?
If I might add, if you want to adjust one of their salaries, or increase the water and sewer superintendent, you do have the authority to change a salary at any time during the year. So if you wanted to say, bring it back at the next meeting and increase the salary.
No, that's fine. I'm going with the, the mayor's recommendation, but that's just something I wanted to look at in the, in the future. Is there a motion for the budget, or is there any other questions or concerns? I had a couple items. So I wanted to propose, and we don't have to make a decision on, on it tonight, but as a part of our budget discussion, I'd like the council to consider establishing a capital improvement projects or SIP budget for both the water fund and the sewer funds. Currently, all revenue and expenses are deposited to one fund, which is not conducive to tracking long-term capital projects. Establishing a SIP fund will allow the town to plan and budget long-term major construction or infrastructure projects. It will allow us to track funds we get for water and sewer projects like grants, loans, and bonds. It will keep us in compliance with rules from funding agencies. It will improve financial transparency. It will support long-term planning by distinguishing one-time capital projects from ongoing operational expenses. It would be helpful in rate-setting and, and financial forecasting. It would create a line item for a reserve fund, the ability to track revenue sources separately, and record engineering, legal, and construction costs with each funding source and project. So I would really like to put that on a future agenda. I think it'll help our budget process immensely.
Can I just clarify one question? Are you talking about something that's different on, from page thirty-two and thirty-three of your budget? Thirty-four, or wait, yeah, thirty-two through thirty.
Where you list out the projects for each fund.
Thirty-six. Well, at the top of the page, you have your cash reserves. Where I've listed out all your income that's coming in. So on page thirty-two for your water fund, you'll see the cash reserves for the water fund. You'll see the proposed income that comes in for the water fund. Then you'll see below that, the debt, the debt service for the water fund. And then on the next page, as they listed proposed projects. So are you speaking about, are you talking about something different than that?
Well, it's, I, I'm speaking to that. However, our current code doesn't allow, or doesn't have, a SIP. A dedicated SIP for, even though you've listed it separately, it's not in our code to have a SIP. So I'd like to create a formal SIP. Because right now, when we get grants for water and loans, it's deposited into our water fund. There's no fund that's called cash reserve. There's no SIP fund that identifies all of our infrastructure projects. When we have our audit, there's no SIP fund for water and sewer. We don't have to decide.
Would you, no, no, would you be willing to just put that all in an email for me? So that we can talk about it with the town attorney and the auditors, because I think I understand, but I want to make sure that I convey it properly. So if you can shoot me an email or a phone call, one or the other?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, okay, any other questions regarding the budget? I, I just have one more. Kim sent out the new interest allocation policy. Thank you for that. I just want to verify that that's gonna take effect in FY twenty-five? So the interest will be redone for the current fiscal year? Okay, and then, we're also gonna have potentially interest for school mitigation fees, and then interest for stormwater management revenue that we would add. I'm sorry, I probably should have had you at the microphone. Can you repeat that for the microphone? Sorry.
Stormwater is already factored in to the allocation. It has a balance, but right now, the balance is so low compared to the overall total balance that it gets zero percent. So, but, but the interest is earned on whatever monies are in the bank, and then that is allocated across all the funds based on their cash balance by fund.
So in FY twenty-six, the stormwater management would receive interest?
It depends on if it earns enough money. Right now, it has a lot more expenses than revenue as, as a whole. It's never gonna be a self-sustaining, it actually.
Revenue went up by like fifty-eight thousand. I'm asking because the ordinance says that the stormwater management fund will receive interest based on the funds that are deposited into that account.
If it has any balance left after expenses, yes, it would get its share of interest.
And then we could potential, could potentially have a new category for school mitigation fees that would also earn interest.
I do not know anything about that at this point.
Alright, that's all. Okay, um, additional questions, comments, or is there a motion?
No more questions. No, I think we're good.
I'll make a motion to accept the budget as is presented here this evening.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any against? And any abstentions? Okay, so it passes. Board one with Commissioner Sweeney against. Okay. Right. We're down, we're adequate public. Right. All right. Looking at number five for consideration, approval of ordinance twenty-five dash oh eight, amending title fourteen, adequate public facilities. Is up.
So the adequate public facilities ordinance was presented at the last meeting or not lasting on May fifth meeting where. Uh, the board had asked for more information to help determine the right thresholds and mitigation fee measures for the APFO amendment regarding schools. So, um, a memo has been put together by Mr. Eric Soder, who's here today. As you can see, the goal of the amendment is to enable residential growth in the near and long term. And the current school capacity threshold restricts development approvals, especially since there's an. Elementary school that is near capacity. And so the proposed amendment would allow up to one hundred fifteen percent of state-bated capacity and implement a school mitigation fee. Which would be used for improvements in this instance of elementary school. The additional funds collected via, um, the school mitigation fee will be held by the town and dispersed only when the town agrees. With the county and the Frederick County Public Schools on the timing and extent of improvements identified. So. The memo provides standards for elementary, middle and high school in various municipalities as requested by the board. And it also includes a potential additional seats for different capacity thresholds. It also provides an example of four hundred units with the amount of mitigation fee those units would yield. Um, if you have any questions about the memo.
I do have some questions. So I thought, first of all, thank you for the additional memo and the, the information, because I wanted to see what was happening. In other towns and municipalities. And I, I think the one that stands out the most is that of the ones that are charging. There's not many who are charging school mitigation fees right now. Outside the city. Of Frederick. Um, and the ones that do, their APFO standard is. Tends to be a hundred percent at the elementary level. And I know we had talked about. Okay, so to clarify, it would be one fifteen and not. We're saying up to one fifteen is adequate. The school is adequate. So. Why, why are we not starting? At a hundred percent and then having the mitigation fee kick in like the other municipalities have.
The board.
Well, I mean, is there a reason why we got? What is, is there? Okay, so I'm proposing that it starts at a hundred percent. I mean, to me, it's. If the fees don't kick in until the school hits a hundred and fifteen percent capacity. We're not going to start collecting those fees until that time. So that's all that money that we are potentially missing out on to improve the school. And when I look at the other ones, it says a hundred percent, a hundred percent, a hundred percent, except for Brunswick, which is one oh five. So. I, I'm very torn because my gut tells me. There's going to be more students than what is anticipated because the formula in reality often don't shake out the same. But at the same time, if development's going to come. Why not have the school mitigation fee so that we have something to take back to Frederick County to, to say we want to do. Expansions to our schools to address that. So having said that, then if I. Say, yeah, okay, let's go forward with the school mitigation fee. Why not start it at a hundred percent? Because that would give us. More than if we were to start at one fifteen.
My, my thinking on that is, uh, this developer that it would affect for the Emmett Ridge two. Has made it this far. And we didn't have that in place. So now we'd be throwing another burden onto this developer. Uh, at this time that he didn't know was going to be there when he first decided to, to, uh, to take on that project. Uh, so to be fair to the, the current developer, I think that would be, uh, be the reason. And any further development coming in. Uh, would be subject to the.
Emmett Ridge is already established. It's always got houses built in it. It's just never been finished. So actually it should, it's just. Already born in a town that just never was completed.
Are you talking about Emmett Ridge? You're talking about Emmett Ridge two. Correct. Correct. It's not.
I don't think it should be, um. Subject to the, uh. The mitigation fees.
Okay, so.
Since they already have, I think ten, at least ten houses in it. I don't know if there's ten or not.
Emmett Ridge two is already started.
Yeah, it's the, um, the Irish Town Court area is considered Emmett Ridge.
Okay, so I, I believe, um. We were estimating maybe six students with the, yes, please, with the completion of Emmett Ridge two, right? Is that, is that what we heard last night?
Yeah, so just for the record, Eric Soder, I am a resident of town. And principal at Rogers and worked loosely with the, um, our fun comprehensive plan group. So. Brought in to help staff, um, just because, uh. I work with a lot of municipalities in the county, um, developing these, these changes. So, yeah, you're absolutely right. In terms of the number of units, I think forty-eight units would generally be six. If you, if you were using. The county's rate, you know, the more aggressive rate, it's probably double that, like ten to twelve students. And we had that discussion last month, just how. Emmitsburg Elementary has a lower generation rate because we do have mother seat in school, which draws students in. So. Uh, you know, you're absolutely right. And what I understand it is just that remainder portion of Emmett Ridge. Either the preliminary plat expired or, you know, just because it's, um. Um, you know, a project that, um, has delayed. That's why it has to retest for APFO. So that's why it's stuck. And as, um, your attorney noted, I mean, it's up, it's up to you, you know, where you want to set that threshold and totally understand it. That's why. Um, I thought those were really good questions, you know, that you asked and hopefully, you know, provided a fair amount of information here. And perhaps the one thing to consider. If there is a balance that needs to be struck here. And again, I do not represent that developer, so I want to be clear, but just kind of. Reading the, reading the tea leaves here. If there's a balance that you would want to strike. To allow that to move forward because a lot has been invested in it. That's why we did provide the hundred and five percent. Because a hundred and five percent you can see, um, would provide a little bit additional seats. But I think would have the governor that certainly, um, you know, President Bowman-Pullitt, I'm sensing from you is like, you know, you're not. You weren't allowed to go, but not too much. And perhaps that one a hundred and five is where you want to land. Um, because I believe. You know, just probably what the APFO test would result, that would permit that, um. Development to move forward, but likely not anything else without paying the fee. So if you add the fee to it, you'll have that as the future. The, you know, the only, um. You know, probably minor thing. It just depends on how the APFO test. Plays out because it is a three-year test. There's background development and pipeline. If it triggered it, it may trigger it just for a few houses, you know, just so, just so the, the mayor could be, um, comfortable. So it may be, let's say they may have to pay for two or three of those mitigation seats. Um, but the way that the ordinance is set up, let's say, let's say it was four, that'd be about forty thousand dollars. But the way the ordinance is set up, they can spread that amongst. All of the dwelling units. So you're probably looking at less than a thousand dollars per unit. For Emmett Ridge, you know, if that fourteen seats. You know, kind of tripped them up and they had to maybe pay for a few, but. That's my perhaps suggestion to you. If you want to. Continue to move forward because I sense that with the board of allowing Emmett Ridge to move forward, but still have a governor that's really low. So you can get the revenue for. Effectively anything new. So.
So let me ask it this way. If it's about Emmett Ridge, but then that's fine. I don't have issues there. You want the hundred percent. Can we not make it? I'm not sure what the status is of Emmett Ridge as far as site plan approval, conditional.
They, they're preliminary plan for, so they're at preliminary subdivision.
So we could put it to where for any, any development that does not already have site plan approval. Prior to December thirty-first.
Well, if it stays at a hundred percent, then Emmett Ridge couldn't pass is what I.
But, but they should, but their site plan approval, if it's completed by December thirty-first. They're exempt.
But I'm not sure how you get.
Yeah, no, that, that doesn't work. Um, what currently as your ordinance is written. Emmitsburg, I mean Emmett Ridge can't proceed, cannot proceed if it trips the school's test.
Couldn't we consider in the future, modify it and say, we're going to keep it X percentage to allow Emmett Ridge coming in, but any future development is also most likely going to require annexation. And put the additional fees as part of the annexation agreement.
That's, so what you do, what you negotiate in an annexation agreement. Is what you negotiate in an annexation agreement and you can negotiate all kinds of stuff in an annexation agreement. Obviously, you always have to meet whatever the bottom line is of the developer. Um, in terms of its willingness to proceed. But what, what this does is, is separate and apart from any annexation agreement. Okay, so it doesn't, it apply, it would apply across the board. So for example, if this board were to say, okay, well, we're going to put the test number at. A hundred and five percent and just for ease of reference, just say it's across the board. So what this would do, then it would, um. Apply to. Legislation like this has a forward-looking. Approach. And so it could apply to Emmett Ridge and Emmett Ridge, as Mr. Soder suggested, could then come in and say. Okay, well, I'm short. Four houses or whatever it is, you know, four units, four single families, four towns, blah, 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 because there are different rates for each of these different types of dwelling units. And then it would, as this is currently written, it would. Pay the fee at the time of. Uh, final plat recordation, but the number of units is determined as of the time of the preliminary subdivision plan approval. So, I mean, there's one thing I, I do, and I don't, I hate to throw a monkey in the works here, but. One thing that this board really should look at. Is there is an extraordinarily long length of time between. Acceptance of a final plat and the deadline to record it. It's three years. That is not okay. That is way too long because what happens is. Criteria changes, I mean, all kinds of stuff change. You know, you have a three-year period on your preliminary subdivision plan approval. That's more or less normal, you know, two years, three years. But to allow final plat approval and not require recordation before three years, that's out of bounds.
In order to make that change, is that, um, something that starts at planning commission or it starts here? Or what does that look like? Because I feel like that's kind of.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's not, it's not a zoning change. Um. It's a subdivision regulation and I have to go back and look at the state code, which I did not bring, of course.
That's something we put on.
Yeah, I would add that to your to-do list.
Yeah, our future agenda.
Yeah, I don't know, Mr. Soder.
Back to the APFO though, I don't understand why we couldn't say if he doesn't have approval by December thirty-first. Why we can't add that in here?
Well, then you're making legislation specific to one developer and I don't think that's a good plan.
We're making it specific to any developer that doesn't have approval by December thirty-first.
We do have ten more units coming in.
You do.
And they would be subject.
Yeah. So, so what are you suggesting, Mr. Hoover? I guess I'm not tracking. Are you saying that? I, I'm not getting the distinction.
It sounds clearly that, that the goal here was to eliminate, to, to somehow, some way eliminate. Or avoid Emmett Ridge having to pay part of the APFO. That was, that, that's.
I, I don't know what the goal.
So if that was the goal and I understand what your goal is, was the hundred percent or the hundred and five, whichever the case may be. Why not set it at a hundred and five, hundred percent or whatever, but make it effective December thirty-first, more, more or less versus. Now. So if you don't have site plan approval, if you already got site plan approval, your grandfather, if you don't, and if you.
Yeah, but he can't, he can't get approval without the change in the ordinance.
Why?
Because he trips the school's test. He exceeds the number under your current law.
Right now, we don't have the ordinance.
Well, you, no, you, you, you can't approve a development if it exceeds a hundred percent.
You have a hundred percent, so you, he can't go to the next phase, which is site plan approval. So you need to allow some.
Will a hundred and five percent give him those six seats?
I mean, I, I believe it's going to be pretty close. I mean, if I would. Imagine that if it exceeds the threshold, it may be between two to four of the houses. Of the forty-eight would have to pay that fee. So you're talking about forty thousand dollars, but then that's divided by the forty-eight. So it would be less than a thousand dollars per unit. So that, that's my professional judgment, just right now, you know, kind of looking at the numbers.
That was the question I had is how do you? Explain to me how that works as far as like the, the APFO test that is submitted to the board of ed. I would assume that's done with a generic formula.
Yep. So what happens is the town, um, or any municipality sends to the board of education. We have a new development. It is X number of units. These are the types of units, single-family detached townhomes or whatever. In this case, it's forty-eight single-family detached units. This is where it's located. Um, they generally, generally will say, here's the other developments that are still, um, have some type of, of approval. Because they may count as pipeline development. And then the board of ed, um, it does a formula. They use their pupil generation rates, take the forty-eight units. And that generates the number of units that are coming from the new development. But then you have to add what's called background development, which is just the naturally occurring changes like if. Um, like we had a period of time here where it was no, no new development going on, but, but there's still. You know, changes in our enrollment just because, um, it's naturally occurring and sometimes it goes down. So they take a three-year average. In, um, in your, in your, in your school district. Um, I was looking at, um, I believe like for our three-year average is like four new students, elementary students a year. So they will add four. Plus, let's just say on average, it's six students that came, comes from this development, divided by three, they'll add two per year. Just because they divided by the years and then anything in the pipeline. If we had another development that was also generating five or 10. I don't believe we have anything in the pipeline. So you might be adding the four plus the two. So you can see, we're already near capacity from the information we, we provided. So probably year one, it would trip. You know, just at like hundred and one percent or hundred and two percent. Um, then the next year you add that, um, to it. So you add. The background development plus the pipeline development for all the, all three years and you see where you're at, at that third year.
Then the back, the background development is, is the developer that's already existing.
Yeah, just the naturally occurring. Yep.
Published, he, he created his lots or whatever.
Yep.
In twenty twenty-four. So he's already in the mix. So if somebody else comes in in twenty twenty-five and has more than. Even though these houses aren't done in the first one, the calculation still stands to say. It, it meets, it now meets the projected. Um, hundred percent, hundred five percent or whatever.
Like, I mean, because I, that's why I was saying estimating, I mean, I think we were at two twenty, it's two twenty-three or something that's in here. Like, I mean, because I, that's why I was saying estimating, I mean, I think we were at two twenty, it's two twenty three or something that's in here. What Emmitsburg Elementary, I think the capacity is two twenty five, but background is like four per year. And then the project itself is two per year, you know, so you're twelve thirty one, you know, eighteen, that's what I'm saying. That's eighteen students. Eighteen seats. You know, I don't have the test in front of me. That's why I'm caving out and saying that you, so it may be. Four seats over, but that four seats isn't four houses. That may be one house. So maybe one house has to pay that fee. Maybe it's two or three. So I don't believe it's a humongous.
So is the lift, is the remaining fifteen lots in Brookfield going to be under this APFO?
I don't know, or do they have APFO approval or no?
No, they.
Okay, so they would have to get.
Sorry, they have been approved. Um, yeah, so they're just out of the improvement.
Never built.
They were never built, right?
They were already approved, but never built.
The, the, you're talking about the new lot, the new ones.
The ten lots.
The ten.
Yeah, the ten lots, they, the subdivision plan has been approved.
They don't have to go through the APFO at this point. So, so we don't have to count those, those houses.
Right.
Because I'm trying to think, are they going to jump ahead of Brookfields? I'm trying to figure out.
But there's also five, when there are five townhouses can be built on the other side of the way. Oh, is it way warmly or what is it way running out beside you? That's what I was asking. I, I knew we talked about it one time, five going there. That's just three and.
That's going to be a single lot.
Uh, yes.
Three houses in Southgate, yeah.
Well, I don't know how the, your APFO is, whether it's for five or more every single, um. You know, I don't know if in, in a lot of jurisdictions, uh, APFO doesn't kick in until you're. A major subdivision, five or more lots. I don't know if it's.
It says five or more.
Five or more. So if you have a single lot, you still pay the county impact fee, but you're exempt from your APFO. The test, yeah.
I'm sorry, back to Brookfield, um, in fourteen oh four oh seventy exemptions. It's to the FPO policy, the exemptions, it says any existing preliminary subdivision plat approved prior to January first, two thousand and eleven. So that would be Brookfield. Shall be exempt from the requirements of this chapter. If. The approval for three years beyond January first, two thousand and eleven. So that's already expired. So the way I read this, Brookfield would have to meet the test.
They did. So what, what she's saying is, so we just done it two months ago, I think, two months, three months ago. The, the remaining lots got in the, that, that section, the final phase. Got, got, got the, um, site plan approval.
Right, but they would have to meet the AFP test or whatever it's called. Have to meet the test because their peer, their three year period for prior approval has already expired. So they would have to meet the test, right? Is that what that means? Okay.
So they are, so they are going to jump in front of, um.
Well, they may have already been approved because then they, there is, remember they're a smaller development, so their APFO. Impact is less though.
So if, if the lots are recorded. This doesn't apply. I mean, if the lots have already been subdivided, this, what we're talking about has absolutely no bearing. If it has preliminary plat approval. The way this is written. That's a good question. Does it have to test? It passes at preliminary plat approval. So if it already passed preliminary plat approval, the preliminary plat has not expired and they go to final plat. Within the three year period, then they don't have to test.
But that's after two thousand and eleven. The three years starts from January first, two thousand and eleven. So it's already expired. It's fourteen oh four oh seventy.
Um, for the ten Brookfield houses, their preliminary plan was approved in twenty twenty two. And they applied for a final subdivision plan in twenty twenty five, so.
So they, they're out of the range.
Yeah, I mean, they must have tested for.
They did.
They, they, they have to test separately. Anything that was after twenty eleven would have had to test separately.
Correct.
Yeah, in your example.
So they did go through a test?
They did before, before my time, yes.
Yeah, they apparently went through a test and passed.
Recently.
Before twenty twenty two.
Whenever they got their preliminary plat.
Yes.
So going, going back to the percentage.
Shall we make it one ten?
I mean. Part of me thinks if the idea is to impose a fee so we can start. Bringing in those improvements. As a, as a result of the overcrowding, then it, it, it should be lower than one fifteen. Yeah, one, one, I.
One ten would, would still allow the forty eight houses to come in.
So how do you, so from the time they test, that's just an estimate. So. Then does it like equate to reality when people start buying the houses and then count the kids that are coming in?
Well, it certainly equates to reality for anybody that comes in. Subsequent to that and, um, the pupil yield rates are looked at every two years, uh, both the county planning office and the board of ed. Board of ed has the, um, number of students that are generated. In the various households by type and the county planning office, um, has the perm, you know, the number of dwelling units by type. Marry that data up, uh, through their GIAC graphic information system and that's how they have the pupil yield rates. So. Those slight adjustments kind of get fixed over time. Like when you start seeing. An area that's growing and things like that, you'll start seeing the pupil generation rate perhaps change a little bit. Um, and you probably can go back in time and track that. My sense is Emmitsburgs will always be. Somewhat lower than the countywide rate again, because Mother Seaton is such a prevalent school that is pulling children from, you know, from the. From the community, from the town. So, um, you will see those adjustments over time, but I don't think the, the generation rate. Will ever be the same as the county. And where you'll again see it is. You know, new homes certainly bring new, new children in for a period of time. Sometimes there's, you know, this, uh, bubble influx and then, you know, it kind of go, goes away. I've seen, saw that, you know, where I live in Pembroke, you know. You know, back in oh one, oh two, you kind of have this bubble and then. You know, the bubble moves away because kids grow up and it takes time for a neighborhood to kind of, um.
So is this just like a. One time. Because looking at, okay, where am I? Uh, fourteen point oh four, point one hundred developer options. Under school mitigation fees. And number C two for exceptions. So. The last line in number two is noting, however, that the projects resulting. Test may exceed that threshold during a portion of the duration of the APF.
Yeah.
I have no idea what that means.
Okay, so this is going, so this is again, this ordinance is modeled or pulled after both the counties and the, and the city of, uh, Frederick. Who also have, have this and it, it starts with, um. The fact that, you know, no matter what, beginning of that, if the, um, at the time of the test, if it's over a hundred and twenty percent. Sorry developer, we're just not going to let you go there, but, um. If it was at now one ten, one oh five or whatever like that. Um, you know, we'll let you test, but maybe at the end of your test, it triggers the one twenty and it's like one twenty two. That's what it, what it, what it means. Like during your, your course of your test, it could exceed the one twenty, but we just don't want that starting point to be there. Because we don't want the end of point to be end up like a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty five. And that's how the ordinances, both for the county and the, the cities were enacted. You could take that out, but then what that allows is if you had in a very, um. Uh, high, you know, um, capacity, like you were at one thirty or one forty for some reason. And develop, a developer could come, exactly. So this is more like a governor, like, hey, we're going to allow you to do this somewhere between, you know, under a hundred and twenty. We'll let you come in and try your test, but, um, the starting point has to be below one twenty. We know my trigger, you know, go above that for a period of time. But we just don't want it to be, you know. Free, free for all. Yeah, it's kind of a.
determines the test period.
Yeah, your, your ordinance already has, I think it's a three year test period.
I don't remember seeing three years.
I don't, I don't see that either.
Just from reviewing it, that's pretty typical. A lot of ordinances, some ordinances allow for longer test periods if it's a larger development. But I think yours is still a relatively old code.
The only thing it says is specifying the number of years for which it looks like it's at the discretion of whatever. The town would ask for, but.
Yeah.
You know, I feel like.
I, I think, I don't know if it's.
Three is very small considering how.
No, I agree, agreed. I mean, a lot of, if you had a large developer, they would actually request a larger timeframe to try to test. Because three years, as, as pal was even saying, I mean, you could, you don't even get the chance to move dirt within three years. So.
Right.
Um, but I, I'm pretty sure that somewhere else in your ordinance, it's a three year test. And I just don't have it in front of me.
If you could find that.
Yeah, I don't have it. Yeah.
That's something that I, I was interested in. I, I don't think it should be, we get to choose a two year test or.
Yeah.
Five year test. It should be a standard.
A lot of times it's graduated where, you know, if it's under a hundred units, it's, it's at least three years. But if it's larger development, you would want the developer to give the option because you don't also want them to. Have to build right, you know, everything right away. You want to help phase it and that helps phase it. So a lot of ordinances have. Okay, it's at least a three year test, but if it's larger, you can make it a four, five, six year test, which they would prefer because.
What part makes it phase easier, the longer the test?
The longer the test.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Because some of these that you, you put in here, they have a phasing option. Or mitigation fee or potentially both.
It's probably in an unchanged section, I would imagine.
It's, it's three years, it's D.
It is?
Yeah.
All right. So, oh, okay. Yeah.
But that's.
I can't see it because it's not listed. Um, so is that something that we are able to? Specify to is to increase the number of years. I would imagine it falls under the. It, it, what I heard you say is that a longer test is actually more accurate and it gives the developer options to phase in. So is it, can we increase that to five years?
Not the way your ordinance is currently written.
Right. So is that something that if this were to go through, we could say with that part amended?
So for some really large developments. What happens is because things change over time and housing demand changes over time with respect to style and type. They do something called phasing. And so the property is actually only subdivided in like. Pods or bays. And so what's, what would be subdivided would be, and it also is a way to allow schools and every infrastructure to get. You know, to absorb. Population over time. I mean, what you're talking about currently doesn't get there. I mean, we're talking like four hundred, five hundred year developments. But what they do is, or what they can do is say. All right, we're going to go in and do, we're going to subdivide land bay A. So that gets tested and then time goes on, sales happen over whatever period sales happen. And then when they're ready to do land bay area B, they have to come in and test at that time. So is that a fair description?
Yep.
So, you know, one of the reasons you don't want to necessarily. Spread it out is so say somebody comes in and they're at a hundred and eighteen at the jump. But the schools are already at a hundred and eighteen and they have a hundred unit subdivision, but. They're allowed to go forward, even though they're going to be. You know, at a hundred and thirty percent after it's approved. So really the question is, what is it? How does the town feel about that?
So three years makes it more manageable. In the long run. So three years means they have to. Finish building.
Record plat.
They have to go to plat.
Plat.
In three years. Well, they have to, see, this is why, this is why the whole timeframe thing is really. Messy. So three years for subdivision, preliminary subdivision approval, because that's really when the subdivision gets approved. I mean, you know, there might be a couple of conditions or whatever. And of course this would be a condition. But then they get final plat approval, but they don't have to record it for another three years. And that's the part that's.
So that's the part we're going to put on a future agenda.
Yeah. Because.
And, and, yeah, and that may be also a good time. If you're talking about that is. You could come back and add the language. If you want to give the option for a longer, because there could be a larger development that want, would want to have a lo, a longer test time. But not, don't make it mandatory. Say, you know, uh, three years or a developer could request a larger test time as approved by the planning commission. They could say, well, I'd like a five year test. Now there's a lot of negatives to a five year test. When you do a five year test for whatever it is, traffic. Not so much water and sewer, because it's one time, but traffic in schools, you also have to include five years of impact. So when we were talking about background and pipeline, you had not to add five years of background and same with traffic studies. Um, you have to do use five years worth because you, anytime you do a traffic study also, you say, well, this is the traffic out there today. Generally there's two percent increase on these roads because you know, this will be looked at it, but so now they're going to have to add five years. So there's. It's a balance, like you can't make it so ten years because it's some, you know.
So what happens if I had the three year? And I don't finish, the developer doesn't finish his, his build out. So he's.
Yeah, so it all depends is if, if the, if the, if you have a, if the flats are recorded, that's a, an approved lot. And they can pull a permit generally anytime. So as, as long as there's no other regulation that's limiting. The important part for developers to get to final plat, that's a recorded lot that they can move forward on. But if it wasn't recorded. Then it could expire. You could have a preliminary plat. If they don't go to recordation, it could expire. Then they would have to come back and retest. It happens all the time.
Oh, it happened to. Emmett Ridge.
Emmett Ridge. I mean, that's, that's your example with Emmett Ridge. It didn't go to final. If that went to final at some point way back in the day. We wouldn't be sitting here talking about this.
Emmett Ridge, you got more problems than that.
So, yeah.
So if it expires, it's really.
Subliminary plat.
Not in his best interest.
No.
No.
Yeah.
It gives the town, the town or the county another body to handle.
Yeah.
Right. Well, and also to just keep more current with changes in regulations as time goes on, because they change all the time.
But if the market's not very good, he may not make it.
Yeah, because, because when you record, you're paying. But you know, you're paying a recordation taxes and then you're also paying a different base.
Right.
On that, you know, you're a different carrying cost. So it all just depends on the development. Yep.
Another question is, um. See if I can find it. So on page, well, I don't know if me referencing a page number of an agenda is helping to you.
Yep, I've got a three of eight.
It's a, who am I looking at? Page fifty seven, which is. Page fifty seven under fourteen oh four one hundred, section C. Seven, use of funds, which is at the bottom of page fifty seven, way at the bottom of page fifty seven. So the town may appropriate funds from the school mitigation fee account at its discretion. For public school construction improvements, including but not limited to blah, 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 blah. So. Could that be changed to town council? Or how does that work? Because and what is included? For infrastructure upgrades, because looking around at other similar. AFPO. There's. And I'm just asking because others, infrastructure upgrades could apply to water, sewer, roads. A lot of other things besides schools. So. Is that, does that apply here or is this intended solely for a school project?
Go ahead. I was going to say for school only, yes.
Yeah. I mean, that's how other, that's how like the city of Frederick is used, you know, you mentioned like water and sewer. Maybe the board of ed needed a certain money to make it a water and sewer upgrade. So that would help an expansion. I imagine you could use that money. In that regard, like, okay, we need. Increase a line or whatever, so that we could get more capacity in the school for, you know, as part of another project. I imagine it's going to be all packaged into one project, you know, like we talked about that limited renovation study that they did a couple of years ago. I imagine that study has a number of improvements, you know, HVAC and maybe some expansion, all these things. That would be the thing that you would be engaging with the board of education, the county. What is that study? What is the extent of it? And then at some point. And then at some point, however, you appropriate funds now, which I imagine it's through some town council approval. Then you would, you would make that, you know, make, make that decision, but.
Is that under town council approval? The town may appropriate.
You, you, you act as the town. Yeah, it's part, it would be part of your, your budgeting process also, because you're going to have a special separate fund.
Okay.
Okay. And so that, that goes with the whole interest thing and everything else that we've talked about tonight.
All right. I am satisfied with that answer. Thank you. Well, under use of funds, it says it can be used for other educational enhancement projects, serving or intended to serve town residents. But in the memo we got, it says the money will be used, the town, when the town agrees with the county in Frederick County on the timing. And extent of improvements identified. Those are two very different things.
Well, y- you can't go change, as a, as a matter of practicality. You can't go and change something that's owned by the board of ed without the board of ed's consent. So it's, I mean, it's.
It's not limited to school construction. I mean, we could develop a GED class for adults based on use of funds. We could set up adult education classes. We could, I mean, it's pretty broad on what we could do with the money. As long as it's related to education.
Yeah, I don't think you want to paint yourself in a quarter. I think that's a good thing.
It, it says.
Keep it broad. I think that's a good thing.
It says necessary to accommodate increased enrollment or other educational enhancement projects serving the residents. So yes. If you, if you decided to offer GED programs, then theoretically. You could do that, but I don't know where you do it because you'd have to have the consent of. The board of ed to use their buildings. So, I mean, I, and I don't know what, where you do it now.
I'm just saying the, the uses in the ordinance is different than the uses identified in the memo. So which is it?
Well, the memo is not law. The ordinance is law. The ordinance is law.
Yep.
Um, along that same line. I, I don't, I don't have the limited renovation study. Do we know what, if that is just. Does that include expansion of the facility or just other upgrades? And the reason why I'm asking that is because. In a couple of the other municipalities, I saw that. I just lost it. Sorry, I'm tired of my, can't even find it now. Oh, here we go. Um, the fund should go towards the cost of a project to address the overcrowding at the school and not to pay for costs attributable to existing deficiencies. In the public facilities. So. Does, do the funds go to make room for the extra students? Because if not, I don't think that that. Those fees are going to be helpful in that case. So.
And, and I think that's the important why the jurisdictions that have put this together is. You hold on to the money and you don't disperse it until you're satisfied of what that improvement is. And that's what the city of Frederick. Did. They held on to it. And I believe one of the, you know, with the pre-K and all those things that were crowding schools and they. Finally worked with the board of the county and said, okay, we've got this pot of money. We want this to be capacity now, you know, and they've, they had the same discussions. They just didn't want it to go to non-capacity. Enhancing projects because you could use it for, you know, fringe things, but. That's, I think that's the really important thing of why this isn't money that you automatically pass on. You hold it until as a collective board, you're the ones that make a decision of where that money's going.
So is there any reason to, why we should or shouldn't specify that? In the language is that it will be used. To address the overcrowding and not existing deficiencies in the public facilities.
We should say that if that's what your intent is.
Would, would it be easy? They, it sounds like if they just struck out or other educational enhancement, because then it's, I mean, you still have the. Flexibility of public construction improvements.
Why would you strike that language out?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, but infrastructure upgrades. So, yeah, we could, they could put in a new roof, a new.
Yeah, I mean, if, if there's something wrong with the room or something, they could go and improve. You could say, we, we want to arrange to approve. You know, classrooms A through C or whatever. And that you can use these funds to do that.
Right. Because I, I know we had talked about, maybe we could finally put walls up in the school. But if we're overcrowded, putting up walls isn't going to address the overcrowding. It's, we're still going to have an overcrowded space. So that's where my thinking is, is like using the money to address the need for additional space versus. You know, putting a new floor in the gym or something.
But it would still have to have your agreement as town to do that, to make those expenditures. So if you take out or other educational enhancement projects, I mean, if you do a full stop of. It leaves the flexibility with the board. As to how to agree with the county, if you want to do an infrastructure upgrade, for example, the walls. I mean, if you have an elementary school that's, you know, that was designed during open, you know, the whole educational theory. Yeah, that it was better to have an open classroom as opposed to a closed classroom. Then you could spend the money on putting those walls up if you collectively decide that that's what you want to do. I mean, it gives you more flexibility that way.
But wouldn't that leaving it wide open if we decided and it says, is, you know, as projects serving and. The rest of the town residents, if we decided mother seating, three, two classrooms, we could give the money to them.
It's not from other scenes for the.
But why?
It has to be a public.
Public school.
Yeah, no, don't go down that road.
No.
Not tonight. We don't want to have to deal with the first amendment tonight. So.
Yeah, so I, I like, I like that suggestion, Ms. Powell. Is the, yeah, or other, because either way you still have broad language before that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you just do a full stop after increased enrollment. Okay, I, I can, and I hate to, I'm going to say this now anyway, and I know. Everybody probably wants to shoot me, but if you look at one point or fourteen point zero four point zero nine zero. I, I think that it's not quite written correctly because the way this is written, it only allows. A developer mitigation program under subpart A, and I think that what you want to do is receive approval pursuant to. Section fourteen point zero point one hundred.
Okay. So.
Because you have fees or developer mitigation. Because I read this a couple of times and it was just like, yeah, no, that should come out. So it should, I, I think it should read conditional site plan or preliminary flat approval may be granted to a development. That does not have adequate public facilities at the time of planning commission consideration. Provided that the developer receives approval pursuant to. Section fourteen point zero four point one hundred. Yeah, because I think that's the, it.
That's only one option.
Exactly.
And there's more than one option.
And there's more than one option.
Yeah, that makes sense. That makes sense.
And this is just for schools. I mean, it's not like you can meet schools and, or not meet water and sewer, but you meet schools. So. I mean, I think we're okay there.
The other thing I saw is that after. Oh gosh, I can't even find it now. Um, is it after this year? The school mitigation fee would go up three percent every year following?
Yeah, you also have the power by resolution, the way this is written to change the school mitigation fee, you'd have to adopt a new resolution. So if you don't adopt a new resolution, the number is the number in the resolution that you approved increased by three percent. And the way this is written, the, the fee doesn't get paid.
It's a.
Until the building permit is issued.
Plat.
Well, actually, then we need to talk about number eight. It says. The local school mitigation fee paid in accordance with this section is in addition to, not in lieu of any other applicable tax or fee. Including but not limited to the public school development impact fee. Established in the Frederick County code and paid at issuance of the building permit to Frederick County. So I got confused.
Yeah. So it may be superfluous language, but so the local development impact fee is the county impact fee. And it just was wanted to be clear that. The mitigation of fee is paid early at plat. But you still have to, but you still have to pay the impact fee.
Yeah, because that, I got a little bit bolished up by that.
Yeah, but you still have to pay the impact fee to the county that just does that building permit. So. Yep.
And how were the fees determined?
So the county, uh, determined those fees. Oh, it's been maybe ten years from now and they have increased them, you know, annually and, um. Effectively, the cost of a seat. Is, you know, is determined through, you know, an evaluation. And then they, they broke that out and basically said. The impact fee. That is already established, covers the county's portion. And there's a rational nexus to that in terms of how much a county or jurisdiction can. Uh, can charge is only, there's an upper limit of what that can be. You have, you know, you can't charge more than, you know, what it costs. The. Balance of it was the state share and roughly it's like a sixty forty split of what that is. And, um. The agreement back in the day when the very first mitigation fees at the county were, was, okay. Developer, you want to use this extra option that we're going to increase the thresholds to allow these things to happen. You're not only going to pay the county portion, which is the impact fee like you do now, you're going to pay the state portion and you're going to pay it earlier. Because we want to get as much money as we can to jumpstart these projects. We still might get paid back by the state, which is a good thing, but those things. Take time. So it's, it was paying the state's portion earlier. When they establish those fees, it was also at a time of, well, you're going to pay, you're going to pay. And they actually put a kicker and they kind of added twenty percent to it. So it's the state portion plus twenty percent. So it is. You know, it is a, um, a robust fee. Um, but you're getting that fee because you're allowing something to move forward at an earlier time that perhaps they would have to wait, or maybe it never happens. So. That's kind of how they're, they're established. Yep. Um, but you know, you, Commissioner Turnquist, you did. Mentioned about equity and I was, and I think that's a good point. And as we noted in the memo, you know, the, the, the one thing that you do. Have in here and how these are developed is. Let's say a project comes in, but only a portion of it goes over that threshold. So you're not maybe having to pay for all one hundred, maybe it's fifty of the units. You, at the time, that's why it's a, you know, you have to write a memo and says, okay, it's, it's a million dollars, but you can spread that among all of your units. So. It does allow for some, some balance. Um, and the other thing is. Um, you know, if you're do, you're doing this now, um, and you're establishing now, a developer is coming in eyes wide open. You know, I think as the mayor noted, you know, for something new, that's fine. Um, you're trying to. Uh, thread the needle, I understand with Emmett Ridge and totally appreciate that. But at least having this on the books is a proactive approach that you're. Letting them know, we're going to allow you to come in, you're going to pay a little bit extra, but at least they can do that as part of their pro form. I make that decision upfront, you know. Um, and make that business decision. So I think it's actually, um, positive in that regard, you know, because you're kind of putting on the books now and. So.
I think all of my questions have been answered. I think my only issue is. The one hundred and fifteen percent and the one hundred and twenty percent. I think they're too high.
I have a question, Eric, on paragraph six on page fifty-seven, where there's a.
With section, I don't have fifty-seven, I guess.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
Four of.
Yeah, page four of A, yeah, item number six at the end of that paragraph, it says unless the residential density or intensity increases. The projected pupil yield. And I can't remember in your zoning code, Nigella, if. You can have administrative adjustments because some zoning codes permit. An increase in density or intensity of a certain percentage through administrative approval as opposed to having to go back to planning commission.
Yeah.
How does that work with the paragraph?
I think that's just a catch to make sure. I mean, imagine if, you know, you don't often get it, but if there was, happened to be perhaps like a town home lot, which is maybe a single lot. Or multifamily. And it got approved for fifteen, twenty units, but since it's a single lot, they're not coming back for a plat approval. But they may be coming back for site plan approval. It's kind of a catch so that a developer, somebody couldn't pull a fast one. Like, okay, I got my plat approved. And it was ten units. But now I'm increasing the density. They should still have to get retested for the balance. So it, it's more of a catch-all, you know, just as. I don't think you'll ever experience it, but it's a, a just in case.
And this would apply regardless of whether it's an administrative adjustment or a planning commission adjustment. Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. So. The way, the way it's currently written, we would only start charging once they trigger at one fifteen, but as of one twenty. You're denied.
You can't, you can't start the test. Yeah. And, and. Yeah. Well, you can't start. Yeah. I mean, it could, the test could take you past one twenty. But again, you, you don't want to start a test if you're over in twenty. So it's, it's kind of, uh, there's multi-levels of that kind of governor. You're like, okay. Um, you know, if something was at a hundred and ten percent. I mean, let's say you chose a hundred and ten percent, you, you wanted to bring it down a hundred and fifteen, you're not there, a hundred and ten percent. Something was sitting there today at a hundred and eleven percent, it would still allow them to test. Because it's under a hundred and twenty. It may trip, it may get a hundred and twenty-one or whatever, but they could still use it and pay the fee and all that kind of stuff. But if the starting point was already at a hundred and twenty-two, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-one. That's just the, hmm, we're not comfortable with even allowing you to move forward. And that's why. That's a little bit higher. It just kind of gives a little bit of a runway. Um, and the biggest thing is, as you said, is, do you want to pull down the. Uh, you know, one fifteen to one, one ten or, you know, one oh five. Yeah.
That's my only thing is I, I would like to see it come down personally to one oh five because. Looking at the numbers, I know what that translates to from my.
That's reasonable.
My background. So as a parent or as a teacher perspective. If we go to one fifteen, that's another potentially twenty-three students. That's a whole nother class. Right? And, um, which chances are they're not going to have space for another class? So it gets. Spread out and then you have these large classes everywhere. So. That is, that could be a potential really big impact for Emmitsburg Elementary, considering there are no walls. So. Right? And it's a nightmare.
Commissioner, could you turn on your mic?
Oh, sorry.
We had so many children come in at one time. We had like, uh. We went from. Two or three, I'll give you an example, two or three teams to twenty.
Right.
Because that's how many kids came one time.
Right. Right. And I don't. Don't quote me on it, but I don't know that FCPS schools are allowing portables anymore. I heard that they were ta- taking them.
New ones?
I don't think so.
They're not, so it's not like we put overflow into a portable because of, they pull those back because of security. So we know that they have to be within the building, the existing building. So with that said. While you. You, you could add on to the building. But it would require a project that needs to be funded.
Requires money and project, which is the.
Right.
Idea of, which is why you want to capture more dollars.
Right. Which is why I want that to kick in at one oh five and not one fifteen.
So you want the one oh five and then we have a couple of other edits that, that, this is pal made one and.
There's some type of cleanup things, but those can be just cleaned up.
Can we just? Can we bring it? Back with all the things cleaned up or do we?
Sure, if you want to.
I mean, or do we go to a vote insane?
Language, I think language is on cleanup. I think, I think based on discussion, we knew the language that we want to bring it back. It's cleaned up and it's so.
Okay.
Can we just not?
What about the hundred and twenty percent?
She wants to, she said a hundred and fives, what she wants to.
Well, I mean, the hundred and fifteen will go through a hundred and five, but the top, the top percent that we will not let it exceed. That you can't start testing, can't start testing.
Right. Are we talking, dropping from twenty to one fifteen? Is that what we're talking about?
That's the question. What do we want to drop it to? I mean, I don't want to intentionally overcrowd our school.
Yeah.
A hundred and twenty percent is quite high. Especially when the estimated numbers are so low.
What's the number then?
I don't know. How's one fifteen? Are you good with one twenty? What do you recommend, Mr. Sodan?
It's a policy decision.
So what what is, what is, what, so what you have in here is what Frederick City and.
And the counties, yep.
Have other municipalities, where are they at with?
They don't have the fee.
Does Brunswick have something?
Well, one fifteen.
Not a fee, no. So again, you're, this is when you can. When you can start. If you're going to use the fee as a as a mitigation option, this isn't your your threshold, you, your current threshold is a hundred percent, now you're talking about one oh five. This is the start time for the, and one twenty is what the other.
So if I have Brunswick or somebody else that has developed, much more development. They allow you to test. Up to what level?
So they have a phasing option at one fifteen for elem- for elementary.
You can test if you won't, if you.
And the phasing option is. They take your, yeah, yeah, their their base test is one oh five for elementary, one ten for middle and high school. They have a phasing option if you're under.
If you're gonna exceed to one oh five.
But under one fifteen. But that's not a, yeah, well, it's a phasing option, but a lot of things still have to fall into place, but it's different because they don't have a fee.
Yeah, phasing option for any school not exceeding one fifteen.
Yeah, but the two that have fees, which is. County and the remaining ones in the county, the city is one twenty is the starting point.
Okay.
Yeah, none of them go up to one twenty for an elementary school. And even then you can't pay the fee, you gotta phase it in. I, I'm fine with making the one twenty, one fifteen. Be more in line with that to that. I mean, I mean. Here's the thing, it's a starting point. We can always bring it back again if needed.
So you want, so you want to reduce it to a hundred and five percent, from a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and five percent capacity?
Correct.
You want to start to hundred, instead of a hundred and twenty, it would be a hundred and fifteen percent capacity. Now add on there.
Yeah, I think there should be a full stop after. Yeah, fourteen point oh four point zero nine zero, there should be a full stop after point fourteen point. Fourteen point zero four point one hundred, full stop.
Okay, so you want to eliminate the rest of that?
I think the rest of it comes out because it's contradictory, because the mitigation. I mean, what, you don't use the term mitigation plan. And it's sort of, I I think it's unnecessary.
And then we wanted, then we also wanted to change.
And you have to delete for a development mitigation plan. You know, we're getting rid of the A.
Right. And then on page fifty seven, item seven, you wanted to reduce that one down.
It's a hundred and five.
You wanted to take off. The last part I said was where it says, or other educational enhancement projects. Services or intended. Wanted to delete that. Is there any other changes?
I think you've covered it.
Yeah, I mean, and if you want to say, and, you know, you can instruct the staff to make any clarifying. When I say clarifying, I don't mean substantive changes, but like, you know, there's some typos, like set for, it should be set forth. Yeah, just to fill in a couple of words here and there because in apostrophes. And if you wanted to look at it again, we could certainly give you a red line and put it on your consent agenda. Just to confirm your approval, if you want to do something like that, and you don't have to have a full blown discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay.
All right, I'm gonna make him, I'm gonna make a.
And it was, and it's, you had one fifteen and one hundred C two, right? One fifteen, that was the. Starting point that you dropped it down to.
Yes. Well, wait a minute, the starting point's one oh five.
Well, that's the base test is one oh five, but you can't use the.
You can't exceed. Can't start the test.
Now we're all on the same page.
Yeah. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to condition accept ordinance twenty five dash two twenty, twenty twenty five, ordinance number twenty five oh eight. Was it APFO, adequate facility, conditions that. The hundred and fifteen percent capacity be reduced down to a hundred and five percent. The testing range of a hundred and twenty be changed to a one fifteen. Item fourteen dash oh four dash zero nine zero conditional approval paragraph. A. Be ended at pursuant to fourteen point zero four point one hundred period. Scratch the rest of that statement. And.
Oh, don't forget. It's on page fifty eight, we're doing a full stop after increased enrollment, I think. Sorry to interrupt your motion.
It's actually. Starts on page fifty seven, item number seven. And we're going to take that one and we're going to do the hard stop at accommodating increased enrollment period. And delete the remainder of that paragraph. Staff and legal counsel to make any clerical clarification. Comments within the. Presented orders.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Oh, yes. I do have one other.
Really?
Yes.
Oh. Like you're joking.
Also to bring it back. For for final review, final approval as a consent agenda.
Yeah, on a.
Yes. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any against? Okay, motion passes five to zero. It is now ten twenty. Do we power through or go home?
You have resolutions that go with this. I don't know if you want to do that tonight or.
Resolution, yeah, that mitigation.
Yeah.
Fee, wait.
And rates.
Establishing, right, so, I mean, I think we've already kind of hammered that out in a way. I'm good with that.
I'm, and and you're good with the schedule of fees? I don't know if you got a copy of that. You did get it? Okay.
Yeah, questions have been answered.
Then you need to adopt the resolution if that's what you're doing.
Okay, so for consideration approval. No, wait, hang on. Approval of resolution twenty five dash oh five R establishing a local school mitigation fee. Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any against? The motion carries five to zero. Now, can we crank these out just as fast, the rest of them, or no? I'm good with both.
So moved.
Okay, so can we do? For consideration approval of resolution twenty five dash oh four R. Proving the application receipt of financing for the community legacy facade and improvements. This is just a formality that we do every year. Motion to approve. Do I hear a motion? Yeah, is there a motion, motion to approve? Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any against? Okay. Motion carries five to zero. For consideration approval of twenty five dash thirteen amending title thirteen stormwater management fund. And this is just taking it from an enterprise to a revenue, to a dedicated revenue fund. Yes. I just have one question. Where will it appear in the budget? Will it be like the SIP? Or part of the general fund or?
It will still remain that department thirty three that you're seeing in the current budget now.
It just won't be called.
It's just not an enterprise fund because it will never be self sustaining. So, but it's a dedicated revenue with the same restrictions that was set forth in the code.
Good, I've got it. Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Is there a motion to approve? I guess I should specify that. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any against? Okay, motion carries five to zero. And finally, for consideration approval of a private stormwater management deed of easement with. Five point six Emmitsburg LLC and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the town.
Yeah, and I could just speak briefly to this. This was required as part of the improvement plans that were approved for this project. The easements have been reviewed. And they do have a provision in here that requires. That provides the town the opportunity to inspect, but mandates maintenance and repair by the private landowner. So they're good to go.
Okay. Um, any questions, comments, or is there a motion? Thank you, Commissioner Sweetening. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. 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 Any against? Okay, motion carries. Five to zero, and I'll just like to note in four minutes, we crank those out, so that's record time. If they could all go that quick. Okay, set agenda for the next meeting. Oh, wow, it is gonna be July then, geez.
I got it, it's gonna be July. I got it, July fourteenth.
Yes.
July fourteenth. For admin will be review of town owned rental properties.
Okay.
If I understand correctly, I have two consent, apparently. First one is for consideration. Appoint Robert Colai, Coley to the Ethics Commission with an indefinite term beginning July fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Number two would be for consideration approval of mended ordinance twenty five dash oh eight. Title fourteen adequate public facilities ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's just to confirm the acceptance of the typographical corrections. Okay, and then for agenda items, number one would be for consideration approval of the town of Emmitsburg. Twenty twenty five comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Number two would be update on the lead line service inventory.
Okay.
And then does the board want to discuss and consider the rental registration program? Because that's all I have for July then.
I can't think clear enough to give you an answer on that.
And I think we kept saying we wanted to discuss the whole thing of rentals and we wanted to get in boarding houses. I think. We can have a discussion, wrap that all into one.
Yeah, that might, would it behoove us to do a workshop versus an agenda?
Well, that's kind of why, that's kind of why I put it on here, because the comp plan with no comments should not take. Very long, the lead line shouldn't take very long.
Okay, so.
You could add a workshop if you wanted to. But that's.
I mean, we could always start the, I mean, it could be for discussion and it doesn't.
For discussion and consideration, because it gives you the ability to not make a decision on that.
Okay, so I mean, we can always start the discussion.
I think it should be a long meeting because I'm not gonna be here.
We're gonna zip through, Mr. Mayor. Yeah.
Ms. Willis.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask, should we add the other item where you were talking about the three year?
Oh, yeah, the final flat approval. I'm sorry. Yeah, the deadline for, and this is something you might want to ask Najila to look at. Just in terms of how other jurisdictions handle it, I know that other jurisdictions have, I mean, some have a thirty day filing requirement. Once you get that final plat, it's got to be reported in thirty days.
Okay.
Other jurisdictions don't have that. I mean, you've got three years. I think that's kind of in the outer limits.
Yeah, maybe we can just.
Have a presentation.
Yeah, maybe a presentation and looking at options and what others are doing to see if we can potentially move towards tightening that up in the future. Yeah, I I don't know that we'd be ready to vote that night. Okay. Any other additions? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as discussed?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any against? Motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to? Adjourn, thank you.
Move.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Meeting is closed at ten twenty eight.